All right, you guys can go ahead.
All right, thank you. All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Goffstown School Board Meeting. It is Monday, August 30th. I call the order to at 7:07. If everybody could stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So we need to approve our August 16 minutes. Did everybody have a chance to look at them?
Yep.
Any questions, comments before I take that motion? All right, so Ellen moves to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Shane. I was gonna say, somebody has a second. All right, any other discussion before I do roll call? Okay, see and none?
Reda.
abstaining.
Okay. Uh, Jenny?
Yes.
Jared?
Jenny.
Janelle?
Yeah.
Dan? Dan? Where'd he go? All right, he's not there. Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So we have two abstentions. The rest, yes, and Dan is not there. Is he still on?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Correspondents?
None this evening.
Oh, okay. Accommodations, good news. Caleb?
We will have not yet.
School starts tomorrow.
I have, I have one.
Yeah, go ahead, Ellen.
I hope you all saw it. I have captured it. We go Facebook. Um, just thank you to the, at Glenlake, yeah, Glenlake, uh, kindergarten school. Apparently, a group of staff, spouses, kids, parents did some landscaping, kind of mulch and plants. Mums are out by the big sign by the school that looks really nice.
Nice.
Thank you to them and recognize their effort there. I thought that was really, really nice.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ellen. Anyone else? Go ahead, Jenny.
There's not accommodation, but um, I'd just like us to recognize Sarah Mullen, uh, one of our first grade teachers at Bartlett. Um, her husband was tragically, um, killed in a motorcycle accident. Um, he was a racer for his family company and he was killed. Um, so just thoughts out to Sarah.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jenny.
Having a tough time.
Yeah, I'm sure. Anyone else? All right, see and none?
Dan is here.
Yes, hi, Dan. I heard you come back.
Sorry, I think I missed a minute.
You did. That's all right.
Sorry.
All right, so we're moving on to public comment. I assume there are some public comment that people want to speak tonight, or you're just here to listen? Does anybody want to speak tonight? No? You do? Okay. So, um, just gonna go over a couple quick rules. When it's your turn, come up to the mic, say your name and address clearly for the minutes. Uh, we ask that you just keep your comment to three minutes, that you're respectful, uh, no name calling or anything like that. And this is not a question and answer dialogue. Uh, and then if you have your papers, you can hand them to Denise Morin or to one of us so we can put them in the public minutes. So whomever would like to go first? Go ahead. Yep, that's, that'd be perfect. Thank you. And then just get close to the microphone so we can hear you.
I'm gonna take my glasses off so I can look at this.
Speak up if you can.
It's buzzy now.
Speak up.
Right.
I can take this down.
Okay.
Okay. Um, hello, how are you?
Hi, good.
Um, my name is Joanne Duffy. I'm the 37-year resident in town. Um, both of my girls went through the school system. I now have a granddaughter, excuse me, who's about halfway through. Um, I think this is the first time since the early 90s that I was here to make a public comment to the board, which is unusual, but I feel very strongly about the mask issue, so I'm here tonight. Um, I sent you all an email on Friday. I don't know if you've all had a chance to look at it. I do have copies that I can give to Denise, um, if you haven't seen it. Um, so I'd just like to reiterate a little bit of what was said. I won't repeat myself on, on what was in there. Um, so I think I'm concerned, at the last meeting, I wasn't here, but I did watch the meeting on TV, and I'm concerned about the time it took for the board to come to a conclusion on the mask. I know Ellen, Ellen was quick to make a motion. There was some discussion, but I don't think the ramifications of the lack of having kids wear masks was really discussed. Um, I think especially the little ones. Um, so I think that the timing of the decision was kind of rushed and I don't think it was thoroughly discussed by the board members. Um, I'm having a hard time trying to understand when all of the healthcare professionals such as, um, such as, where am I? Um, excuse me for one second, um, are recommending masks indoors such as, um, the CDC, Dr. Chan, um, in today's paper, it was announced that Dartmouth Hitchcock in Lebanon, Boston Children's Hospital, they're all recommending masks be worn indoors. Um, I work in a public building and, um, I had taken my mask off for a while, um, but I'm, you know, now wearing masks when I attend meetings, just because we're kind of squished together and it's, there's lots of people in the room. And I'm fully vaccinated. So, um, I, I think that there needs to be more discussion about that. And I'm not, I'm, I'm not clear as to why you would go against all of these health professionals. I read the report that, um, that Brian had put out, and there were actually two matrix that Dr. Chan had, had discussed when he met with the educators, or it was like a video call or something with the educators. And, and what happened was Brian introduced one of those matrix to the board. However, the other one was never provided. And that one that was provided asked for, um, let's see, I should have written this more clearly, um, that masks would not be recommended for, if for three things. Vaccination status over 80% in your district, six feet distance implemented, and the testing system that you've been talking about, um, and probably will talk about tonight. I have a look at the agenda. Um, we can't, it was, it was stated that we can't achieve six feet. And, um, as far as 80% vaccination, I think there's like 300 kids in that age group in the state that are vaccinated. It's a very low rate right now. Um, and as far as the littles in the elementary schools, they can't be vaccinated. So, I mean, no one's vaccinated there except possibly the teachers and staff. So I think you're putting them at risk rather than, and I understand Brian's explanation of it all and having, seeing where the breakouts occur and then dealing with those spots. However, I think you're opening up all of these children, uh, to a higher risk from day one by not asking or having them wear masks. I don't believe that the, and, and this is just an assumption on my part, the people who, um, aren't asking for masks for their children probably are not in favor of vaccinations in the first place. My, and it's an assumption. My other concern is-
Joanne, I, I'm gonna ask you, you need to wrap it up a little bit, please.
My other concern is that the students who, who are infected then come home and give it to the family members and then it spreads from there. So that's a really big concern of mine. I'm requesting that the board take another look at this, make a motion to reconsider what was voted on last week. And, um, and I, I know that you follow Robert's rules, and Robert's rules does allow you to reconsider the motion at the following meeting, which would be tonight. So that's my request. Um, I'm not saying that, you know, everything's perfect and masks will, will alleviate the problem. I'm just saying that it's an extra precaution. And I think we need to take that, I keep, you know, take that attitude with, with the children of our, of our community.
Thank you, Joanne. Um, before you leave, I don't, I never received an email. I don't know if anybody else did. Did you? Okay.
I did.
I'm, I'm very confident that I did receive that email.
Yeah, I didn't. Can you resend that?
Denise.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. Is there anyone, ah, hi.
Hi, my name is Chris Barrett. I live at, uh, 395 Wallace Road. Um, I'm here to, tonight to voice my concerns about the decision the school board has made to not mandate masks in our schools. Though you've already voted, I'm requesting you reconsider the decision based on the recommendations made by the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, Children's Hospital of Dartmouth, amongst many other hospitals, to keep masks mandated in the K through 12 schools. Uh, on August 30th of 2020, Hillsborough County had an average seven-day new case count of seven. With the latest data from New Hampshire Public Health, we're currently seeing an average of 77 new cases per day. Masks were required last year with only seven required, average per day. We're seeing an 1,100% increase in daily cases and we're not requiring students to wear masks in school. Um, a recurring theme has been if you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. If you don't want to wear a mask, then don't. It's win-win. But the fact is unless everyone is wearing masks, they don't work. Masks only work if everyone is wearing them. My daughter will be attending school with a mask. She will be protecting the other children around her from any potential, potential sickness or disease she may have come in contact with. But who's, who's protecting her? If others aren't wearing masks or at, being required to, my daughter's not being protected. None of the children are being protected unless everyone is wearing a mask who's unvaccinated. We've already seen what's happened throughout the country where schools have been forced to quarantine and in some cases returned to full remote, which no one wants because the districts have been, have not mandated masks. The guiding beliefs of the school board's emergency operation plan says safety is our top priority and we need to have children in schools. If that were true, we would be heeding the clear recommendations and requiring masks on all unvaccinated students and staff. Instead, we're playing the wait-and-see game where we already know that's not going to work. My wife works in another school district that's already has children with COVID that are unable to start the school year. So it's here. Let's do something about it before the children get sick. What's the school board's plan in the, the possible event that a child has a serious reaction due to COVID, due to the clear negligence of the Goffstown School Board acting in direct opposition of the recommendations of the CDC and the AAP to require masks in schools? There's a, there's already a substantial community spread in Hillsborough County and the crippling financial fallout of a potential lawsuit against the town would fall directly on the shoulders of the Goffstown taxpayer. I for one would rather the money be left in the taxpayers' pockets or put to better use in our town. I sincerely hope you can reconsider your misguided and frankly dangerous emergency operation plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Andrea DeVianza. Live on Addison Road. I grew up in Goffstown and attended the Goffstown Schools from first through 12th grade. I come to you tonight as just one of the many concerned parents. I am very frustrated and disappointed in the board's vote at the last meeting regarding masks. I understand the board and Mr. Balke would prefer to make a decision looking at local data and recommendations rather than national information. However, the local data is also supporting masks being required in schools. Dr. Chan and the New Hampshire Department of Health released a toolkit for the upcoming school year, which included a recommended matrix to follow that is different from the one included in the presentation at the last board meeting. The toolkit states that face masks are universally recommended when a level of community transmission reaches the substantial category, which is where we are currently at. During the call on August 11th with Dr. Chan, he noted that the matrix that the board adopted can be used if the schools can, one, strictly implement six-foot distancing, two, the school has a high vaccination status, meaning at least 80% of the school population is vaccinated, three, there is a robust asymptomatic screening testing program. Goffstown has not met these three requirements. I know you guys are looking into the testing program. Only 36% of kids aged 12 to 19 are vaccinated in New Hampshire. In Goffstown, only 314 out of approximately 1,750 eligible students are vaccinated that are ages 12 to 19. Dartmouth Hitchcock Children's Hospital has released a statement that they are supporting the state's recommendations, which include masking. The president of the New Hampshire School Nurses Association is also in favor of universal masking. And our neighbor of New Boston has voted to use Dr. Chan's recommended matrix along with many other districts. Mr. Balke said at the last board meeting that last year, kids wore masks all the time and the first case of COVID wasn't until the end of October because masks were required. I ask you to do everything you possibly can to keep our kids and staff safe and ask that you reconsider the vote and instead use Dr. Chan's recommended matrix. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Go ahead. And then you can go next. Sorry, I, we didn't have the sign sheet tonight.
My name is Nancy McDonald and I live on 34 Ferguson Road. And if any of you know where that is, it's in the country, area of Goffstown, up on the mountain. And two things. One is, it's well-known saying is that you don't let the, you don't close the barn door after the cows have left, which requiring masks after the first case of COVID is too late. I'm sorry, that's... Second thing is, I'm up on a hill. I have the worst-looking lawn that you could ever imagine. It's horrendous. It is that way because I don't want to put chemicals on my lawn and have it washed down to the horse farm and dairy farms there around me. I am watching out for my neighbors. Instead of looking out my window and seeing a beautiful green lush lawn, I look out down the road and see beautiful horses, beautiful cows, beautiful chickens, who do not have to worry about chemicals coming from me. It's called being, it, being for the common good. That is, my mantra is you do things for the common good. Wearing a mask is for the common good. It doesn't protect me as much as it protects you. And if you wear one, then you're protecting me. And I would really appreciate if everybody would protect me because I, over 65, I don't need this kind of a thing. Um, and just for, my, it's my grandson that's in, at Maple Lab. His father tonight is on an open house meeting, virtual meeting with, um, the Virtual Learning Academy, um, Virtual Learning Academic Charter School, because that is where we may be headed if this doesn't change. The last thing I'd like to do is I have here, I'll put this in the meeting minutes, um, a notice that was published from a message from, it's a message from the nation's children's hospitals. Children's hospitals are on the front line of care for kids, anchoring the pediatric safety net for the most vulnerable, vulnerable among us. Tragically, rising numbers of COVID-19 infections among children, surge in cases of respiratory illnesses such as RSV, and the pandemic's ongoing impact on mental health are pushing our children's hospitals to capacity. Combined with significant hospital worker shortage, the pediatric safety net for all children is being threatened in unprecedented ways. We call on leaders in the public and private sectors and the American public to stand with us to help protect our children. And they have three bullet points. All eligible populations should be vaccinated. Everyone should mask responsibly, particularly during school and while attending large gatherings. All should adhere to proven safe practices of social distancing and hand washing. Together, we can keep our children safer. They need our support, our care, and our commitment to their future. They need it now. With urgency and respect, the presidents, CEOs, and executive directors of the nation's children's hospitals. And Chad is on here as well as all these other hospitals. And one final thing, I think I sent this to all of you, but there was a pie chart, MUR, the MUR's page, that showed current infections in New Hampshire and broke it down by age. And 19 and below is at 18 point something percent. That's a fifth of the population is children, of the infected population is children. That is too much. I want my grandson to be safe and grow up and have a healthy, happy life. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Go ahead. Yes, sure. Go ahead.
Hey, everybody. Kate Shay, Tamar Drive, Goffstown. So I have something a little bit different, and you guys heard me out a couple weeks ago about this, but, um, as I sat and listened to everybody so far, and I thought long and hard, I think a lot of us are spending sleepless nights up lately, right? Contemplating what's up ahead, not knowing what the future's gonna bring. One thing that jumped out is we have the First Amendment. So one of the little-known parts of the First Amendment is the right to petition. And that's what we're all here to do tonight, right? We have the right to petition our government at whatever level for something that we feel is unjust or wrong. It's not to say the board's made a bad decision. And I'm not here to argue one side or the other. I think something that's been lost in the last year or two is the fact that we need to elevate this argument, right? When you look at the elements of an argument and building an argument, when you go through college or various classes, there's aspects to that. And that's something that we seem to be missing. And our society encourages us to take sides, right? It's either us or them. It's mask or no mask. It's one position or the other. But we're all here because we're passionate about something that's important to us, which is our families. And I can share with you guys, you know, without saying I'm one side or the other, I'm here about choice. I think, isn't choice something we can all agree is important to all of us? We have choice. And as adults, we want choice. We want to pick from, you know, 25 different toothpastes in the toothpaste aisle. We all have individual choices. And that's something that's been lost in the shuffle with the us against them. I really see it very clearly. I don't know if it's been epiphany or what, but it's like you bring it up to another level. And I do this a lot in my work, where we kind of bring it up to another level, look at it and look at what's the real problem we're trying to solve. What are we trying to solve? I don't think we're ever gonna solve us against them, mask or no mask. You're never gonna make everybody happy. You guys have the undesirable job of trying to make everybody happy and you're not gonna win at that, I'm sorry to say, you know? It's bringing the argument to a different level. So I'm here tonight to talk about choice a little bit. There are choices out there that will satisfy the various constituents you have that are all over the board. I mean, these are unprecedented times, right? My father grew up during polio. They didn't know what was gonna happen, right? But they had some choices. You know, if mom wanted to keep the kid home, they kept the kid home. This worked with the district. They, you know, figured something out. Kid had to go to the hospital, they educated him in the hospital. Various things had to happen as a result of that whole occurrence of polio. And it feels a little bit like we're stuck in place. We're stuck with what we know today. We're not thinking, I hate the term thinking outside the box, but we're really not thinking outside the box. And there are some people that have thought outside the box for us to make some things available. I know we're gonna go on in this meeting to hear about the shortages of bus drivers, shortages of staff, shortages of this, shortages of that. There are solutions that we can be grasping to today that will take care of some of those shortages without deviating from our standards and testing, our standards and curriculum. Some of those options I talked about last time I was here, and you've probably heard of them. You've all received some information from myself and from other interested parents. I think, given the unprecedented time, times, it's about time to admit, we don't know what the future will bring. We can't stay resolute on our same path. We have to think a little bit differently and we have to all give a little bit, right? All sides of the argument have to give a little bit. And that's not gonna be won by declaring masks or declaring no mask. You're not gonna make all those people happy. And from my perspective, I see both sides. I have a son with a neuroimmune condition that was struck to the point of being bedridden in the middle of the pandemic. He lost everything. He cannot have a trigger to his brain that could send him into another flare of that severity, where he stops eating for six months. So there are people, you have to realize, that fall in between all these sides. So you, you're never gonna make everybody happy. So what I'm here to do is to leave anybody that's interested with information on community-based pods. This could be sponsored again by the district, as I said two weeks ago. It's a bright, recovering bright futures grant from the DOE of New Hampshire. They secured this. Will it be here next year? Maybe, maybe not. Will our dean of remediation have a salary from a grant next year? Maybe, maybe not, right? Grants come and go. But what we do know is for this next year, you've got a solid option that would alleviate the numbers in the schools, that would spread the kids out, that would give people with the masks, here's one pod for you mask people, here's one pot for you non-mask people. You could win at all of this and it's tuition-free and it's a grant being handed to you. So if anybody's interested, I'll be happy to pass around my information tonight. To step up in a way from V-Lex and then you get socialization, 10 kids or less, it's a micro school. These are going to take off, they've taken off in Arizona, they're taking off across country. It would be really remiss of Goffstown to miss out on this, um, in the early stages. Manchester District has even signed on. Districts are signing on. So it's not like it's some far-off concept. It's a package deal. They come, they partner with you, and they launch this thing. It could be very easily done in, in Goffstown. And again, it would solve the tale of two different groups. So it really is sad to see people so, I mean, it's nice to see people passionate, but it's sad, sad to see people feeling unresolved in what their needs are and getting them met and feeling like they have no other option but to send in that homeschooling letter, to send in the V-Lex letter, which is a perfectly good option. But this is one step of even better. You can continue to keep, you know, your funding for the kids here in the district. There's no loss of adequacy in money. It's a win-win for everybody. And it doesn't take a lot to get going, I can tell you that right now. We already have three pods in Goffstown, community-based that are starting. And they will be, they're already in the process of sending in letters. So I just encourage folks to look into this as an option. It's not something that is the norm, right? It's a little uncomfortable, but change is uncomfortable. To, to grow is uncomfortable sometimes. To fail is growth. And to admit, we can't do all this, is to grow. And I just encourage the board to really seriously think about this because the letters have already started to come in and I can guarantee you, it's not a threat by any means. It's just people are desperate for options to meet their own personal needs. They're gonna be coming. And I just hope that the district can get on board with that, too. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And if anyone would like a car?
Is there anyone else that, yes, sure, go ahead.
Good evening, board. Hey, Joanne. Nice seeing you. Doing well? Um, my name is Brian Meiser from 39 Shirley Park Road. And I wasn't gonna speak, but I just wanna continue on my, my talk track from last time we met. Um, and this is more a visual and also maybe a challenge for you guys, everyone in the room, to try it at home. And what I mentioned before, two weeks ago, if you guys did research and find out the medium size of the coronavirus is .125, if you take five, if not just one, we'll take one, but take up to five, um, surgical masks, yeah, like, let me step back. If you guys have been outside in cold night or winter night, you see your breath, right? It's very visual. Or if you're unlike like me, wearing glasses, it fogs up. Well, if you take a surgical mask and have glasses in front of you, or even a glass, it, that aerosol, your breath goes right through. Up to five, um, surgical masks. And that's 15 layers. So if someone tells me masks help, and I'm not against masks, if you have a choice, want to wear a mask, but masks do not help because if you follow the science, it doesn't prevent something going out the mask and doesn't prevent going in based upon the size of the COVID-19 virus. So at home, try it. You put five, um, surgical masks up and you guarantee, if you're wearing gas, glasses, take them off, or you're a glass, it'll fog up. So things are being transmitted and things are coming in. So to me, the only way to prevent that is what I brought in last time, is that reusable one-way respirator, which no one's gonna wear, um, or you stay at home. And no one's gonna do that. So to me, face covering, surgical masks, N95, they do not help. And I don't care what jurisdiction or what someone's saying. The science is very clear. They don't help. So thanks for listening to me and, thanks.
Thank you, Brian. I understand- I understand everybody's passionate, but nobody clapped for the other people and I find it very rude. So let's just be respectful, okay?
It's a choice.
It is disrespectful to everybody that has come here. Listen, I am running this board and I don't want anybody to feel that they are not welcome here. By you not clapping to the people that took them to stand, that is saying that you don't agree with them, which is fine.
They could have clapped without.
I'm asking you to not clap, please. I'm sorry. If you don't like it, you can leave. Well, I'm sorry. I am asking you not to clap. We have another person who would like to speak.
And I'll clap for her.
That is, that is rude. I don't agree with it. I, I don't agree with it to the people that are here.
I'm at a game and I like what they do, I'd clap for them.
Well, that is rude. I really hope that we don't have this happen in school.
Five into ten school boards and it's all been like that.
I am asking you not to clap.
That's fine.
Thank you.
But whoever you say that to us, so I would say that.
I still have the choice of freedom to do that.
Okay.
Laughing at someone's opinion?
No, there is no laughing, there is no clapping. Everybody is to be respectful of everybody's opinion.
But there was just a clear laugh at someone's opinion?
I didn't hear it? No more laughing. Nothing. We all want the same thing, okay? We are trying to do the best that we can. We want our kids to go to school without being bullied and this is what's happening in here? Come on.
The thing is not what you're doing.
I am not going into a discussion with you. We are in a board meeting. I would like for our next person to speak. I am asking you to be respectful. That's all I am asking.
Because not being disrespectful.
Okay. I'm asking you not to do it. I expect you to not do it. Ma'am, you may go ahead, Naomi.
I wasn't going to speak either tonight, but I just wanted to touch on something that I thought we should all remember. And yes, Naomi Major, Eleven Lesnick Road. I just want to remind everyone that this virus is endemic. So it's not going away, you guys. Vaccine or not, mask or not, we're going to keep seeing it. A lot of respiratory viruses behave in this way, other dengoviruses, RSV, influenza, okay? And they keep reoccurring. You know, with influenza, we had the yearly booster because there's different strains, right? This, COVID's going to be the same way. And so this, this target or this goal of having zero infections or not, no community spread whatsoever is, is unrealistic. It's, it's not going to happen. So we need to keep that in mind when we're thinking about mitigation efforts that really are reasonable and make sense. And I also want to, you know, suggest and kind of prepare parents that your child might get COVID. It could happen, just like they got the influenza. My daughter got influenza two years ago. She was super sick. I had to keep her home for days, really high fever. We made it through. She, she was immunity, I took care of her, but she got it. I didn't come in here screaming at the school and saying, "You didn't keep my child safe from influenza." In fact, more children die from influenza than they do of COVID. Look it up, CDC, you'll see that right there. So I just want to remind everybody of that. The good news though, if your child should contract COVID, is that they very rarely get severe disease, very rarely. And in fact, I did just take a peek, the New Hampshire Doc of page today, which I heard wasn't super updated, but I guess it's the best we got. There have been zero deaths for children in New Hampshire. Zero. So although I do understand parents' concern and I can listen to everybody genuinely and hear them out, and I think that's healthy for us to do, I just need to remind people that if we were seriously in a situation where our children were dying, are you joking me? I wouldn't have my child here. I want to, you know, I'd keep my child home in bubble wrap, but it was likely that was really going on, but it's not. And further, I can't speak for everybody in this town, but I can tell you all summer long, this community, our children have been out at malls shopping, at the movies together, at restaurants, in cars, driving around, teenagers and all age groups, okay? Parents too, at restaurants. Now again, I'm not speaking for everybody, but it is, it's going on. So now we're coming into the school year and suddenly, you know, people are hollering, "Your child's going to cause my child to die." I, I can't go there. I can't meet you there. So I just wanted to say those things and I, I want to say that this board does have a lot of support from family and community and thank you for parent choice.
Thank you, Naomi. Is there anyone, go ahead, sir.
Hello, my name is Michael Schapaniak and I spoke here a couple of weeks ago too. And contrary to some other opinions, I would like to applaud the board for trying to or making a next step to trying to back, come back to normal with not mandating masks. And there was a lot of talk about choice and I think that's very important. And some, some of us, or some of you or other people mentioned that there are two sides of the story, it's either black or white. I don't think that's the case. And I think that's, someone said, it's about the choice. It's not about, you know, one side wanting or requiring to wear a mask and the other, you know, preventing someone from wearing a mask. It's about personal choice that we have to make every day, all the time, for us, for our kids, for those that we choose to protect and do whatever we want to. So I think that's really immoral to ask and to ask for others to live their life how some group of people desires to. And I think the, the choice that we have and we have to make is something that we have to respect of others. I have no problem with people that are wearing masks and that's their choice, that's the consequences that they have to live through. And I expect the same respect for, for, for me if I choose not to wear a mask. I may choose to wear it or not wear it, doesn't really matter. That's not the point. The point is to make the parents be responsible for themselves and for their lives and for the lives of their kids. Some of the arguments presented here were to, that it's to protect others. And with all the respect, nobody's protecting me from all the diseases in the world. It's my decisions. It's, there's many things that can happen to anybody in life. If, if people want to really protect, want me to protect their lives, they'll have to give up all their life decisions to me. Their dietary, dietary choices, their exercises choices, then I can tell you how to live a healthy life, no problem. Just, you know, if you want me to protect you, you have to tell me to live your life the way from the beginning to end. That's obviously unreasonable. So all I'm asking is to keep going with the, with allowing people to have the choices in life, just like we had to do for entirety. And respect others, others' choices, even if they are not the same as yours. And honestly, that's not really joking, but the mentality of forcing people to piece, put a piece of clothes on their face or wherever, it's really a Taliban-like mentality. It's no different than forcing women to wear some clothings to, for whatever reasons. They also say it's for the protection and security. That's their reasoning. If that's the direction we're going, then it's not a good sign. Again, at the end, I would like to thank the board for making the decision to not make the mask mandatory and leave people their own choices. And I hope that that decision is retained. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that, oh, sure, go ahead.
Sorry not to prolong this too much longer.
No, that's all right.
My name's Jonathan Napoli. I live at forty-eight Juniper Drive here in Goffstown. I do have my doctorate in pharmacy. I am a hospital pharmacy director at a hospital here in New Hampshire. And just want to, and I appreciate all, and everybody's opinion and I certainly get where folks are coming from. I'm coming from a place where I've seen COVID patients come into the hospital over the past, you know, year and a half, you know, coming up to two years now. And we're constantly coming up with new guidelines, recommendations, and are always airing on the side of caution, what, what the science is saying. And I, I have to disagree with some folks and say that masks don't work. We know that masks aren't a hundred percent effective. This mask is not going to be as effective as an N95 mask and certainly folks can get COVID even wearing a mask. It's the same, an analogy to this would be wearing seat belts. Seat belts don't protect everybody from having a death in every accident, but we know that seat belts drastically reduce the risk of death and morbidity and fall in an accident. Therefore, we mandate that our children have to have car seats, have to wear seat belts. And so I think there is some science that can be applied. Is it going to one-size-fits-all like, like folks have said? No, it's not. It's going to be an ever-changing virus. Do we know the level of efficacy that masks have? No, we don't. But there is enough science there to show that they work. There's been enough exposures for people that have taken care of patients that have been infected and have been doing, you know, an intubation procedure where you're spewing all sorts of chemicals that are getting aerosolized. And the folks that are wearing a mask are, are far less likely to, to, to contract the virus. So I, I'm tired of wearing masks as well. I, I don't like my kids wearing a mask. I think, like folks are saying, I think we have to look at our healthcare professionals that have dedicated their life to this, that are making these recommendations during a time of substantial transmission. It makes sense to have masks. And when we fall out of substantial, it makes sense to then de-escalate and take some of those off. At least in the next couple of months until vaccines have been, have received an emergency use authorization. So parents that choose to give their kids a COVID vaccination are able to get it. We're, we're close. We're in the next couple of months, you know, by October, they're thinking that an EUA might be out for kids five to eleven. So just a couple more months of wearing masks in school to mitigate the risk of folks coming down with it. Are we going to hit everybody? No. But if you're able to reduce that amount as much as possible, I think we have to err on the side of caution, as the rest of us have been doing in healthcare facilities as we've gone along and trying to, to protect folks. So that is, so I'll leave it with that. And again, like some other folks, would urge the board to reconsider the mask mandates during substantial transmission period and take in the science as it goes from there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, I do have two letters that were sent for me to read, so if everybody is done speaking, I'll read those. The first letter is from Cindy Grago Akakis. I'm sure I butchered her name. I'm so sorry.
It's all good.
Yes, or Cindy Rizza. Dear Brian and members of the Goffstown School Board, I first want to start this email off with a thank you for your efforts and positivity last year during what must be one of the more challenging situations a superintendent and school board can face. Your video updates put my mind at ease during a noisy, stressed and scary time for a parent and assured me that my child was in a district where safety and learning were prioritized. The decision-making was measured, evidence-based, and prioritized the safety of our kids so that they could learn effectively. However, tonight I move to express my deep concern about the decision our school board voted on to keep masks optional for the 2021-2022 school year. Over the course of the pandemic, my husband and I taught our kids about personal responsibility when it comes to the pandemic, that we have, one, a personal responsibility to protect our family by getting vaccinated, washing hands, getting tested when sick and wearing masks. But just as important, we, number two, do these things for others because it stops the spread and mutation of COVID-19. Tonight, I just had to have a conversation with our oldest daughter that there may be some children in her classroom this year not wearing masks. And when she asked why, I honestly didn't know what to tell her. My choppy answer went against everything we have been talking about as a family over the past year and a half. With state COVID numbers are on the rise, in particular case numbers among the young and unvaccinated population, I have to say my answer wasn't good enough. All the science points to the fact that masks are effective. We also don't need expensive scientific studies to tell us this. We saw firsthand how effective they were at mitigating the spread of COVID within our classrooms in the 2020-2021 school year. What is even more distressing as a parent is I don't have a choice whether or not my kids can be vaccinated because there are no vaccines approved for kids under twelve. Knowing that masks are proven to protect others, I'm facing a school year where the health and safety of my kids are at the mercy of families who have decided that they want to get back to normal. Looking at the cases rising among school districts around the country that have returned with mask optional, I'm concerned that the decision sets up our district for a course that puts the safety of our kids and their families at risk. Not only that, we are failing to do our part to stop the spread and mutation of the virus. If we truly want to get back to normal, it's vital that we stop COVID from spreading and mutating. This is what doing our part is. This is what the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, World Health Organization, American Academy of Pediatrics, Mystery Science Doug, and every public health expert tells us to do. Although I'm deeply disappointed that the school board came to this decision, I implore the school district remains vigilant and with tracking and urges families to be vigilant for the sake of the community. The more the school district can educate families that wearing a mask is just doing our part in stopping the spread and mutation, we can all get back to normal quicker. Once again, Brian, we thank you for all you do. I know that there is pressure coming from all sides on you in this debate, but I feel it necessary to voice my concerns with this decision. From what I have seen of your work in the community, I truly believe you are someone that listens to the experts and adjusts accordingly. Please, for the safety of our community, continue to do so. And then the last letter is from Jennifer Boudette, the board members. She sent me email with graphs that you all got. I'm not going to read the graphs, but the graphs and the links will be in the public minutes for anybody else to read. So she did write a little letter to be written, read tonight. I write you tonight regarding the mask decision-making matrix approved at the last board meeting. I believe the superintendent unintentionally and mistakenly suggested to this board and the public that his masking plan is consistent with state public health recommendations when it is not. On August eleventh, 2021, the New Hampshire Public Health Department released its school and childcare toolkit, which contains the department's COVID recommendations for school. The same day, the department held a call with schools in which it presented its recommendations. For ease of reference, copies of the relevant portion of the toolkit and PowerPoint presentations are attached. The complete documents are on the state's COVID website. Direct links are in the attached documents. There is only one mask decision-making matrix recommended by the department in the toolkit. It provides for optional, targeted and universal masking indoors in various situations. Importantly, it calls for universal masking indoors in communities where COVID transmission is substantial. The department notes that universal masking may be avoided in certain settings. In the department's presentation, it explained in more detail when and how universal masking may be avoided. The department outlined that universal masking may not be necessary if other mitigation measures are able to be strictly implemented, such as six feet of physical distancing. A school population has a high level of COVID vaccination and/or there is a robust asymptomatic screening, testing program implemented. The department illustrated how a mask decision-making matrix might look in these unique settings. This is the matrix that appears in the superintendent's plan. In his presentation to the board, the superintendent first explained his reasons for rejecting the school masking recommendations of the CDC and the AAP as being inappropriate for the existing conditions in New Hampshire. The superintendent then misstated that the matrix in his plan came directly from the New Hampshire Public Health Department's toolkit. This suggested likely unintentionally that the superintendent's masking plans is in line with New Hampshire Public Health recommendations when it is not. There was no discussion of the limited situations in which the department recommends applying the superintendent's plan, situations that are not applicable in Goffstown. In our elementary schools, there is no In our elementary schools, there is no question that six-foot distancing is impossible. The students are ineligible for COVID vaccination, and there is no robust asymptomatic screening program in place at this time. Therefore, the New Hampshire Public Health Department recommends that Goffstown utilize the matrix found in the toolkit, which calls for universal masking in our elementary schools, if not also in our middle and high schools. I have greatly appreciated your efforts to follow New Hampshire Public Health guidance throughout this pandemic, and I implore you to continue to do so. The New Hampshire Health Department's recommended mask matrix provides a targeted mask model that has been created with New Hampshire communities in mind. Please consider this recommendation and modify your COVID plan accordingly. Thank you. So, those were the letters that I received that asked to be read. Is there anyone else that would like to talk before we close public comment? Well, I want to thank you all for coming out and talking to us and being respectful. I appreciate you doing that. You are more than welcome to stay, or you can leave. It's up to you. Anybody that has written comments, if you can hand them to Mrs. Moore, and so we can put them in the public minute, or email them tomorrow, that would be great. So, at this time, if there's no more public comment, I'm going to close public comment. All right. So, we're going to move on to our committee reports. Scott?
Good evening, everyone. I have before you, you should have before you a manifest totaling $3,96,521.68. Just want to get the summary now. It is another lengthy one because it's the entire month of August. I'm going to try to hit on some of the more, I guess, more noteworthy ones. The Impact Fire Service, this is the inspection and the Cistern repairs maintenance at Mountain View. That was a little over 68,000. As I mentioned, that project was wrapping up today. So, the last I heard from Randy, they were filling the tank in the afternoon. So, but they did, they did see like this substantial rust in the tank, which had to get dealt with. The pipes were, had to be replaced and a lot of the fittings. So, it was a, I saw the, I went by there this afternoon. It was 30-year-old pipes, what they would look like. So, it was pretty nasty. Power School Group, you'll note that the board, this is a grant. This is going to be your learning management system, which we're going to implement starting next year. Surtor Pro Painters, this was, there was a lot of painting done over the summer months at Mountain View, in particular stairwells in the gym. Flooring work that was done here in the guidance office. We did, as is typical in August, we do a lot of curriculum purchases. That was McGraw-Hill. What else was noteworthy? Mountain View Middle School freezer, the compressor went on that, so that had to get replaced. You're seeing a common theme, by the way, at Mountain View Middle School, that we are replacing, there's a lot of repairs going on. So, the school, Ellen was 30 years old now?
30 years.
Right, over 30 years old. So, we're just seeing, this is the time when we're going to have to start doing these types of things. So, I sometimes look at this, and I'm like, wow, we're doing a ton at Mountain View, which is indicative of the age of the school and when the last renovations, there really haven't been any major renovations there. Similarly, if you go down, we had to do a lot of repair work, the asphalt on the playground there at Mountain View. And, I'm not sure if there's any, there's a second page to it. We do have some software that we purchased, that was plagiarism software, which is turn it in on page two. And we had to replace some walkie-talkies that looked bad as well. So, are there any, there's a lot on here. Any questions that you may have, I can certainly answer them for you.
Yeah, go ahead, Jared.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Looking at the second item for the Impact Fire Services, Cistern, I know that you're listening to this partial. Glad that the work's getting done. Do we have an expectation of the remainder of the bill?
Yeah, I think I spoke last week that we anticipate this is going to be around the $150,000 range for this project, so.
And just to remind the board, what is it that we actually granted authority to spend?
Eighty initially from the Capital Reserve Fund. So, as I mentioned at the last meeting, the tank was in horrible condition, as were most of the pipes and fittings. And it's going to be almost double what we thought. So, we're going to have to come back to you again, whether it be the next meeting when we get that bill, we're going to need to adjust that motion when we get that final bill, so it would come from the Capital Reserve Fund.
And just as a follow-up.
Yeah, go ahead.
None of this can be grant-funded through any of our SRS.
Absolutely not, no.
Thank you.
You all set, Jared?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Ellen, did you have your hand up? No? Okay, sorry. Scott, the freezer in the middle school, did that come out of the food, one of their funds, or was that from?
It came out of the general fund.
The general fund? All right, does anybody else have any questions for Scott? Go ahead, Ellen. You did have your hand up. I thought you did.
I don't know if my hand was up or not, but do we have, and I think I asked this the last time, do we have the money in CIP for the $70,000 more that we need?
Yes, we do have money in the Capital Reserve Fund for this additional cost. You'll note that at the last meeting, I had mentioned the fact that we had already earmarked monies for a heating controls project, which we could not, we decided to defer that based upon the fact that our engineer that we hired, this is not a good time to do the project because of labor and materials prices are at the roof. So, you know, in my opinion, the heating controls project is SRS grant-eligible. The other one isn't. So, I would recommend to the board, not this meeting, but at the subsequent meeting, that you kind of think about that, that, but the monies are there. There's over $400,000 in that CRF.
Okay, and then that's where the discussion came, is the impact dominoing through the CIP and what things cost. We had that discussion, didn't we, last time? Because this was more than we discussed the impact going further, so, okay, I'm fine.
All right, thanks, Ellen. Anyone else? Oh, go ahead, Jared.
Just following up on your question, Ms. Chair. So, the general fund was used for the MVMS freezer compressor, but I thought we used the, I'm going to call it the food fund before, when one of the refrigerators at the elementary school had had a lapse.
You had, but because we were in a deficit when this thing happened, I did make the decision to use the general fund because we were already using all this money to cover all of our food service deficits. So, in my opinion, I felt like it was an asset to the, in terms of the school, I made that decision when it happened to use general fund monies. If you want to do a, you want to reverse that and take it out of, and do a transfer, take it out of the food service, you can. But if we were not upside down in food service, I would have definitely done that, but we were just, we were almost quarter of a million dollars upside down in food service. It didn't make sense to me that I would, if I had to make that choice.
So, the money's not there in that account?
The problem was is that we were upside down, like, I think at the end, it ended up like $240,000 because of COVID. So, and you did authorize a fund transfer, so when this happened, if I had the druthers, I mean, I have the choice, when I had the choice between both, I decided to use the general fund.
But normally, this would come out of the food service.
If I could just add to that, Jared, typically, anytime we've had these kinds of repairs or replacements of equipment, we've been able to cover them. And up until just a couple of years ago, we had a healthy food service balance. That's how we purchased the vehicle that you sometimes see that we use to transport food. We completely gutted and renovated the kitchen at Bartlett a number of years ago. We just, unfortunately, in the last year, we didn't have the sales, and we were deficit all year. So, otherwise, we absolutely would have taken that out of the, out of the fund.
I think you're going to be in the same, likely you'll be in the same position this year. I don't think it'll be as bad.
Better neither.
But, but it'll be another tough food service year.
Anybody else have questions for Scott before we take a motion to approve it? All right. Anybody want to make a motion to approve the manifest? Go ahead, Ellen.
I moved approval of the manifest for $3,96,521.68.
Thank you, Ellen. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
All right, Jared, any other discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll do roll call. Breta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle? Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, we're unanimous. Thank you, Scott.
I did have one more thing if I could add. Typically, this time of year, we talk about the New Hampshire DOE 25, which is pretty much all the financial information that is provided to the state. They changed the process a little bit this year, where now I completed, which I did, I completed Goffstown's DOE 25. It went to Cheryl Pratt at Plodzik and Sanderson. She will be reviewing it. Once that is done, then I will submit it. Now, I submit it to an online portal. The superintendent approves it, then it goes straight to the DOE. Once the Department of Education approves it, then it comes back, and then you sign it. So, it's a little bit different process than it has been in years past. So, I would expect that you would see that in late September, early October. You'll see that in form.
All right, thank you, Scott.
We did have our audit, and I hope to share with you, at our next school board meeting, we, due to the circumstances surrounding COVID, where we had an underspend of our budget and a way-over collection of revenues with all the grants that we received, we are going to have a fairly healthy fund balance, which will be very favorable for the tax rate. The tax rate gets set in November, but I can tell you that it's going to be pretty favorable, a lot, a lot, a lot less than what was projected. And it could be close to a flat school tax rate, so, from last year, because of that. We received over a million and a half dollars in grants and federal funds that we did not anticipate, so. And that with the underspend of the budget was rather significant. So, we'll, we'll talk more about that. I'm going to try to have Cheryl come in and talk to our Admin Finance Committee in September, and maybe the board as well, to talk about fund balance and certain options that the board has with respect to them. So, that's good news.
That is good news. All right, thank you, Scott. Yes, go ahead, Dan.
So, Scott, the DOE 25 shows two things. One, it'll show what you just talked about, the surplus, and isn't it used to prepare the tax rate?
Yes, sir. It ends up being the MS-25, which is used for your tax rate setting. And part of that tax rate setting is using what's, you know, use of fund balance to reduce taxes, and that is going to be a rather significant number this year, more than what was projected. And that's why I believe that the tax rate's going to be fairly level.
Now, do you do the MS-25 at the same time you do the DOE 25 and submit it? Or are we waiting for the DOE 25 to come back before you submit the MS-25?
Yeah, so they're both in tandem. What happens is I send it off through this portal, and both the DOE and the Department of Revenue Administration look at it simultaneously. Not, we shouldn't say simultaneous, but like, pretty much at the same time. So, Jamie Dow, who works at the Department of Revenue, will look at that MS-25 roughly in the same time period as the Department of Ed will look at the Department of Education 25. So, those are the two forms, and the DRA one is just a extracted subset, Dan, of the data that's on that longer form.
Right. And my curiosity is, do we sign the MS-25?
You do.
In the past?
Yes, you do.
And so, when are we going to sign it this time?
Same, same, same principle, once, once it comes back.
Interesting.
Yeah. So, I did submit your, your revenue projections, or what I expect the revenues to be, and I had to make a few adjustments here and there, but like I said, I think overall, and I'll go over at the next, the next Admin Finance and the next school board meeting, it's pretty favorable.
Thank you.
You all set, Dan?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry for all the acronyms, everybody in the audience.
That's all right. So, are you all set, Scott?
Yeah, we're all set.
Okay, thank you. All right, Jared, Budget Committee?
Budget Committee is scheduled to meet on September 21 at 7:00 PM. Currently, it says TBD, but when you click into it, it says Town Hall, so I don't know if it's going to be at which location.
Oh, okay.
So, right now, it is scheduled for that, but we have another school board meeting beforehand, so I'll make sure to give an update for anybody that wants to come and listen to that.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you. PNC?
PNC has not yet met since our retreat. I'm anticipating a meeting, our first meeting on September 13, so our next school board meeting. And then we'll probably take a break during budget season and get back on, on schedule for the first Monday of the month.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Ellen.
Can we get back to the three from the board on GTV?
Can we get back from what?
I think we called it three from the board. What do we call it?
The three things.
Three things from the board. After each meeting, that just fell apart after the pandemic. Everything was going on, but I think that's very helpful to the public for us to be doing that. I don't remember the process used, but I'd like to see us.
The other thing that happened is our video liaison, who did the three things, moved away.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
So, that would take some, we've got to find a new person.
Okay, so I go to one.
But it is, it's an agenda item that we'll talk about.
Because I'd like to see us use that again.
Yeah, that was a nice tool.
That was a very good tool to communicate with the public.
Thank you, Ellen. All right, so you're good? PNC? All right, so, stipend committee, that's you, Ginny.
We have not met, and I suspect that I'll be hearing of some upcoming meetings soon.
Okay.
Now that school's back in session, I'm.
Yeah, hopefully, guys can start meeting again. Yes, go ahead, Ellen. That's okay.
I keep writing, this is what happens when you look at it ahead of time and get to think about it. This is, when did I get back on the board? About four or five years ago, about? And at that time, the stipend topic was a hot one previous to that on the board. And we have had numerous discussions on the board, asking for information and statistics, and, I mean, it was in-depth. We've had a lot of conversations about it. And to date, and this is what makes me very popular, we have received no information. This committee, and it's budgetary, which means, again, we're going to go through a budget cycle and not have anything to adjust for our people who are doing these jobs, some of them for free, and probably way under where they should be getting paid. I, for one, would like to see this information start getting compiled and put together and presented to the board, even if it's not a recommendation coming with it yet. But there was a lot of data involved in this, and I'd like to see this start happening.
It has been started to be compiled, and Ellen, we did take care of some of it already, if you remember.
Yeah, in June.
In June.
Yeah, I think it was June.
Yeah, so we had, there were two different sums of available funds. One was added to the teacher contract, the last teacher contract that was approved, and another amount was added to the school board's budget. So, we have actually made a lot of progress. Scott, do you want to give a?
Yeah, he had a hand up.
Yeah, I mean, I think in fairness to the, to the committee, I think they have done a good deal of work, and I think we've moved the needle, you know, quite a bit. And last June, we added six positions to, you know, within the monies that we already had in our budget. And I believe that we're really, really close to, you know, to getting almost all of them in the budget. The committee has to take a look at some of these stipends that are maybe, or these programs that are no longer have the attendance that they once had. And we also have to address performing arts, which has historically been funded by ticket sales, which, as you know, has been a hit on our audit for the last two to three years, and will be a hit again. So, but that's something that we believe that we can address through our collective bargaining discussions with, with the teachers' union. So, I think we're not, we're not there yet, but we're, we are definitely getting closer.
Yeah, because we've sent two surveys out to all the participants that get stipends, and this is information that we've really started from the very, no information whatsoever to start compiling and getting the information together, and have gotten two installations so far already taken care of. And what we have to do now is go, we have teachers' contracts coming up, so that'll be in the negotiations again this year, and.
I would say confidently, I think we're closer to a more equitable platform than we've ever been. We still have some work to do, Ellen, but we've made a lot of progress.
I know we've, the budgeting, the money availability.
The budgeting.
I remember those two things happening. I remember those two things happening.
And coming to agreement with what the stipends would be, what the amounts, all of that. We've worked very closely to make those things happen.
There was, and you're going to have to make, you're going to make me have to think about it again tonight and tomorrow, there was a list of specific data that the Board had requested that was, we were constantly being told it would come out with the full recommendation from this committee, and I remember we had, you're not, do you remember what I'm talking about?
Yes, we talked about this pre-COVID.
Yes, yeah, way pre-COVID.
Yeah, I do remember this.
And every time we asked this, and I think maybe it came up to the Budget President, I don't remember. I know I was one of the ones keep asking these questions about the cost of this, because I know it's going to be a big amount, or I'm thinking it'll be a big amount with regard to our budget ultimately, to get the equity in there, and what it's based on, and how we, I know we have an archaic, an old formula for figuring things out for new stipends, but there was a lot of data that we had requested and we haven't seen it.
Unfortunately, Ellen, part of this is negotiations too, so it's not stuff that I can just, like, give out to you in, in a Board meeting, because a lot of this is going to be stuff that's negotiated as part of the.
Data, too.
The contract, so.
I understand. Okay.
So we are moving forward.
Yeah.
So hopefully, you have a meeting soon and, and update soon.
Yeah.
Ellen, are you good?
Okay.
All right, so you're good, Jenny?
I'm good.
All right, next is Policy Review. That's me. We have not met yet, but we do have our first meeting September 20th at 5:30 at the SAU Building. CNE, Jenny, that's you?
Yes, our next meeting is on September 20th at 7:00 PM at the SAU.
All right.
Okay, ask what the topic is.
For CNE?
Yeah.
Have you guys figured out your agenda yet?
I don't know what the agenda topic is, but you're always welcome to come to the meeting, Ellen. I can get that to you.
Facilities Planning Committee, Jared?
So as it's listed, it's TBD. We are still waiting for the demographic survey to come back. Once it is back, we plan on having a meeting at an appropriate time.
Okay, perfect, thank you. SAU Joint Area Subcommittee, that's me. We were supposed to meet last week. Unfortunately, New Boston, at their last meeting, did not have time to go over everything, so the plan is they're going to discuss it at their next meeting next week, and then we'll set up a time to hear from them. So hopefully, at our next Board meeting, I'll be able to give you a date and time when that's happening. Superintendent's Report, that's you.
It is, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mostly this evening, I'm going to talk about school reopening, that my favorite day of the year is the first day of school and high school graduation, kind of a close second for me, but can't wait to see the buildings full of energy and to see everyone back in tomorrow, so we're excited to welcome all of our students back. In terms of our current COVID status, I wanted to offer to the Board, would it be helpful? All of last year, I went over kind of what the COVID numbers were at every Board meeting. I kind of prepared a smaller version of that, but I, I assume that that might be information that the Board would like to go over, some of the, the data that I'm looking at, some of the metrics. So, current case count in New Hampshire, 2,798 cases. The state announced 213 cases today. For total new cases in New Hampshire over the last 14 days of 279.5 per 100,000. Percent fully vaccinated in New Hampshire, 54% according to the state's website. New Boston is about 52%, and Goffstown is 40%. I would, again, as I shared at the last meeting, just remind people that there is a discrepancy in the 03102 zip code, and whether those vaccinations counted in Goffstown or in Manchester, that has still been unresolved. Mr. Horn and Chief Allard have worked closely to try to get accurate data, but I do, again, raise a question of whether that number is accurate or not, given the potential of 03102 not being counted. Seven-day test positivity in New Hampshire, 5.9%. Hillsborough County, 266 per 100,000. Interestingly, Goffstown at this point is less than half of that. We have 21 cases, which equates to a case count of 116 per 100,000. New Boston, slightly higher, with eight current cases in the community of New Boston for a mathematical ratio of 138 per 100,000. As I stated in the video that I put out on Friday, we continue to look at a layered approach. There is no one single mitigation metric that will take care of everything for COVID, so it starts with stay home when you're sick, appropriate screening. It has to do with ventilation, cohorting, spacing, all of the layered mitigation that we've talked about together need to be considered, and not any one singular thing. The testing screening program that the Board has heard me talk about, we are ready to move forward with our survey for parents to gauge the level of interest by school and by level. We're hoping to have that finalized probably tomorrow or Wednesday, and we'll have that pushed out to gauge the level of response. Just so the Board knows, I am going to be looking at two different questions, and I think they are different questions indeed, one being participation in the pooled screening program, and the second being agreement to have your child tested if they were potentially exposed or looking symptomatic in school. So I do think those are two different questions, but we've got a draft survey ready to go, and hopefully, we'll be putting the final touches on that.
Oh, wait, one second. Go ahead, Jared.
If I could just interject?
Yeah.
Would you have a question on that survey to ask the parent if they would like to know if the results are going to be shared with the administration or just with the parent? I'd like to understand if there's a correlation and.
Yeah, and Jared, interestingly enough, depending on which particular vendor we go with, they have very different models. So one vendor, for example, only does pooled testing, so we would potentially get a sample back and say we had a positive case, and it was one of these people in this pool, but we wouldn't know who. So then that creates kind of a secondary, now what do you do with the, with that group? So we're working through some of those details, but the, the programs and the different vendors that the state has approved for this Safer at School screening program, is what it's called, have different products. So, you know, we've tried to find, and we can't probably find exactly what we want, but we're trying to get as close as we can. But Scott, can you remember that? And we'll, we'll talk about that kind of concept, and if there might be a way to capture it.
I would say that I am unaware of the two presentations that I went to, and Kate, you can, she's behind Jared, you can confirm or deny. I do not believe that either of the two that we had heard from provide results of the testing to the parents themselves. There is a portal in which the school district has access to. In the case of a pooled test, then in that particular case, we don't know who in that pool tested positive, because they're testing an entire, they're testing like, say, 10 people or in that particular, or more. In the case of an individual PCR test, I still believe that the school is notified, and then it's the school who has to then notify the, the parent or the guardian.
But we're not, we're not there yet, and the first piece that we need to do is we need to get a sense of what is the level of interest and anticipated, you know, participation rate. This is a lot of work, and if we end up doing all this, and it's a low participation rate, then the program's not going to be robust enough to give us the outcome that we desire. So, you know, right now, we're at the point where I think we've got a pretty good flavor for what the different vendors that have been approved by Governor, Governor and Council can do for us, and now we've just got to figure out how many people want to be a part of this.
Jenny, Jenny had her hand up.
What would, what would be the point towards having just a pooled testing and knowing that somebody is positive, but not knowing who is? Doesn't that make you have to?
Do more testing?
Yeah.
So the, I'll, I'll use, this is not as clean of an example as we would probably live through, but let's say that we get a pooled response back that we have A, single or more positive cases in third grade at Bartlett. I would then know I need to test more third graders to find out, do we have asymptomatic spread? Do we have school-based transmission? Do we have, do we have something else happening here? That's not as clean as it might be to say, oh, we've isolated it, it's third graders, it's seventh graders, it's students on the field hockey team, it's the cross-country team, it's, we, we would have to have a sense of where the positive is and then do more targeted testing. That's the model. Scott, would you add anything to that?
It's just that it's, you're able to test more individuals, and again, don't think of this as just students, because they use it in the state prison system, they use it in nursing homes, et cetera, where they might do 100 of these pooled tests, and they're telling us that only one or two out of those 100 had a positive, had a positive. So rather than doing all these individual tests, they're able to kind of save all their lab resources, turn those results around more, knowing that maybe 2% are going to come up positive, and then they do more targeted testing of that subgroup. And that's kind of the rationale, is that you can do more testing at a less expensive, you know, way, and that it's, it's preventative, because you can identify, like, a particular subgroup. But in an ideal world, yeah, you could test it, everybody individually, but what we don't know is that, and that's another route that we can go, we're looking at that, but what's the cadence on that? Can we do it every week? Can we do it every month? What's, what does that look like? Whereas the pooled testing, what we're told, would be once every, once every week.
So what's the time?
So if you're sending the survey out this week, will we know something?
We, we should have a good sense in the next week or so of what the level of interest is. And I think the level of interest really might influence which program we go with, if in fact we do, because.
It's all based on the numbers.
Right, it's all based on the numbers.
Because we, if we do this, we want to get it.
If we want to do it, if we're going to do this, we want to do it robustly.
Right.
So that it's a powerful tool. If I only have, and I'm picking, I'm not speculating here, I'm picking a random number, if I have 20% of parents that are interested in this, is that enough? Is testing the same 20% of kids worth it? Those are all things that we have to consider, and do you remember how I mentioned that I was interested in the ability for us to conduct our own testing? You can't do that part unless you're part of the general screening program, so you, you can't just buy the parts you want. I can't just say, I want the ability to, to screen symptomatic students, or I want tests on the shelf in the nurse's office. You have to be part of the pooled testing in order to be eligible for anything else. So we're, again, we're still working our way through this.
Hopefully, more next time.
And I would say, we'll, we're ready to go forward with a vendor, but we need to now get a good sense of what's the level of parent participation look like.
Okay.
So that'll be our next step.
Oh, Ellen, did you have a question on the?
Question, yes.
On the testing?
Given the comments and input we've heard, is, are there any changes, Brian, to the statistics and numbers and need for additional precautions, any adjustments to your recommendation at all?
Well, I, I would say there were a number of public comments that referenced that I used a chart that was not in the toolkit. That is true. I used a chart that was not in the toolkit. It was a, it was a recommended decision matrix that Dr. Chan presented to superintendents, and he used the term permissive recommendation. You'll remember that I used that exact phrase when I presented to you. Ultimately, this is the Board's decision. Is it safer for kids to be wearing masks? I, I, I think that probably the answer to that for sure is yes. There are people who would disagree, but at this point, I feel confident with the recommendation that I've made. There are several other school districts that have taken a, a slightly more parent-choice position. Bedford has, Londonderry has, there's a lot of school districts that have done something similar. So if the Board wanted to go forward with the chart or the decision matrix that is in the New Hampshire toolkit, that is the one that New Boston chose. And the one difference is when the level of community transmission, as measured by the county number, so Hillsborough County, is in the substantial number, it is universal masking. So anything over 100 cases per 100,000, that decision-making matrix in the toolkit from August 11th would have universal masking. Now, I shared with you last year, I think that there are limitations to all of these models. Some of the models that we had last year, based on community transmission, we should have been fully remote the entire year, and I shared that with the Board, and I shared that with the community. So the decision matrix goes from mild, moderate, substantial spread. It goes from 0 to 50, 50 to 99, and over 100. Over 100 is a big, is a big wide crevasse, as far as I'm concerned. We're at 116 in Goffstown right now, we're at 279 for the state. Last year, there were times where we were almost 1,000. So there's a big difference between 100 and 1,000, but it's all still in the same category. So there is no perfect model. I apologize to the people who wrote in. I did not intentionally or try to mislead the Board in any way. I shared with the Board, if you'd like to have something that gives more of a mask optional approach, this is one to consider. And if the Board wants to adopt the decision making, making matrix from the toolkit, that's certainly within, within your purview to do. So I didn't want anyone to, and people didn't say that I misled, but I, I want to make it clear that the, the matrix that was presented to us was something that was shared with superintendents and was said, that here's another option that you consider. I heard someone say that it was predicated on an 80% vaccination rate in the community. I don't recall hearing Dr. Chan say that. No number was given, as I recall. But again, there's a lot of different information out there. This is something that if, if the Board wanted to act on, it is within your purview to do, but I'm content at this point with what I've recommended. And we're watching a number of things very closely. We're watching what's happening with other towns. We're watching what's happening with other states, and we're, if we start to see that we have school-based spread and masks will help mitigate that, you will get that recommendation from me sitting at this table, and I don't care who it upsets. So at this point, I think that I'm content with where we are. We will have cases. I have no concept that we will have zero cases. We already have three. We already have three. I had positive kids that parents called and let us know. We've got kids quarantining from their families, so we already have positive cases as we start the school year. Bedford started last week. They had three cases on their first day. They didn't quarantine anyone, because remember, the quarantine rules have changed. Only household contacts are being quarantined. Bedford didn't quarantine anyone. They did the exact same thing that we're going to do, notify parents of a positive case, and if anyone was a potential exposure, they're going to know that. And then we've got to wait and see what families decide to do, and if we have spread happening within the school, we will address that. We will address it.
All right, one more. Sorry. Go ahead, Ellen.
I was glad to hear the community spread within our schools, because the state wants to use the county numbers as well, which includes the largest cities in the state.
Actually, Ellen, Manchester is excluded, so Manchester is removed from Hillsborough County for the sake of the.
Of those numbers?
Yes, and the city of Nashua is removed also. Both of the two cities.
That's very different.
Because they have their own public health departments. They have their own number specifically. And if you go to the state COVID dashboard, the interactive dashboards, they call out Manchester and Nashua specifically.
Okay, and is part of Goffstown, Goffstown or Manchester in that calculation?
Uh, they're both. Well, that's an interesting question. I, I would have no confidence that anything 03102 related is counted to Goffstown.
Okay, so that.
We, we just, I can't, I can't say that.
But using our community's numbers, as accurate as can possibly be.
Right, and understand that in a community of 18,000, in order to have a ratio of how many cases per 100,000, there's a ratio involved in that. In a town like New Boston, going from four cases to five cases, or from seven cases to nine cases, makes a big difference. So it's, it's not a perfect ratio, but it is, that is how I've looked at it, so I can compare our town to the overall county as a whole.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
We have a couple more hands. Reda, go ahead.
Brian, I wasn't here at the last School Board meeting, but I did watch the recording. Regarding the matrix that you're using, I, I agree that there's a big difference between 119 and, you know, 500 cases. Would there ever be a point in time where you would say masks are required if we got, you know, closer to, you know, way over 100? Is that, is that one of the mitigation strategies, or is it? And again, this is totally hypothetical, if things get out of control.
Yeah. I think the biggest thing for us, we lived through times where the, the spread was that high. We didn't have spread in schools. We didn't have spread in schools. How much of that was masks? How much of that was the, the lower transmissibility of children? How much of that was the layered mitigation efforts? It's really hard to pinpoint. I don't know that I would feel comfortable saying to the board that if we hit a certain number in the, in the county or in the town, that I would recommend masks. But what I have said is, if we're seeing school-based spread, so whether the number is below the level of substantial community transmission, it could be lower, and we could have school-based spread. I, I think that's ultimately what we're looking at, is do we see evidence of student-to-student spread in school? And as a result of that, do we need to change course and change the mitigation?
And, and just to, to clarify, I meant within the school, because I think we did see cases where it was largely, you know, a nursing home, which doesn't really impact us. But if, if it were in the school, would that be a mitigation strategy?
Would it be a mitigation strategy to have more masking? Sure, sure. And I think we're also looking closely at other states. Some of these states have been in school for a month. And many are mask optional, many are parent choice. And I think we're trying, we've got a couple that we're watching closely to see what happens with them and with those cases. I also, from a research perspective, we've spent some time looking for, we've heard a lot that masks only protect other people and not the wearer. I, I would respectfully disagree with that. I think that they protect both. We have looked to see, is there research available? Is there any emerging data that shows what the level of protection for a child in a mask optional environment? What the, we're, so we're looking for a lot of different data that right now kind of doesn't exist. But we're going to keep looking.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ginny.
Yeah. Also, we're dealing with a, a new variant that we haven't dealt with before.
Correct.
That children are much more at risk with this. So I would hope that masking would come up if it were, if it were necessary with, in school transmission, what, with new variant it might be. So I would hope that that would be something that we would go to if we needed to.
I would say anecdotally, we continue to see cases that are in families. And we're seeing parents and kids infected. That seems to be the, the trend that's, we're seeing more often.
Because that's, that's the nurse in me, is hoping that if things are changing, we're going to be protecting the kids and making sure that they are not getting sick and, and transmitting it around. And along those lines too, I think that testing is an important part of that as well. If we could have a testing program somehow that, that parents will buy into, I think that's an important tool that we have also to, to keep the transmission. And I think as a parent, if you don't have to bring your kid to be tested and wait and whatever, I think that's just a real plus.
I agree. My fear though, I, I do want to make sure that we don't have a situation where a parent might say, oh, the school's going to test them. I'll, I, I, I think they maybe look like they're sick. I'm just going to send them to school, and the school can test them if they need to. So somehow between, you know, we, we need to find that right, proper balance between offering a service that I think is advantageous and beneficial to our school community and to our parents, but not creating a secondary unintended consequence that someone can say, yeah, you, you've had a runny nose and a sore throat for three days. Yeah, I'm going to send you to school. They can test you if, if they need to. I also don't want to create that. So like everything, there's a delicate, complicated, nuanced balance that we're trying to achieve.
Everybody good?
Heather?
Oh, yes. Go ahead, Dan.
Um, Brian, and you just mentioned something about testing. I thought I heard earlier that they were going to, one of the testing companies is going to group like a bunch of tests, maybe six, eight, 10, 12, whatever, and they're going to test what I would consider the combined, whatever they take to do the test and come up with one answer, either yes or no. Is, is that an accurate perception I have?
I, I think that...
Which would be, yeah, and, and what that means is, even if the kids come in, there wouldn't be an individual test to get an individual result.
So two different levels, Dan. For the screening, the, the pool testing, I would agree with you that everyone is essentially in the same pool. So if we test 15 kids and staff members, or we test 100, they're all going to be treated as one sample, and they're going to be processed in the lab with one result for the whole pool. Then the premise would be, then you would do more targeted testing where you would know who's being tested. And, and again, this is, this is one element of the model of different vendors. So, you know, we're, we're, we're at the point where we need to get a sense of what is the level of community interest in this. But you're right, it is a pool testing for the screening part. And then, Dan, it allows us to do more accurate PCR testing on individuals if and when that's needed.
So in, I'm, I'm bouncing off Jared's question that I didn't necessarily hear a complete answer to. It is possible for either a parent or the school to know specifically who is testing positive. And that could be something that a parent should know before signing up for it or not signing up for it.
I would say that's accurate depending on the vendor. The, the different vendors have, have...
Yeah, Kate informed me, she texted me that, that one vendor, there is a portal for both the school and the parent. So if you do do an individual PCR test, not a group one, but an individual one, this, both the school and the parent would be notified by a portal.
Super. Thank you.
Are you all set, Dan?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Everybody else good? Brian can continue.
That was actually all I had.
Oh. Well, that worked out perfectly.
I said plenty.
All right. Thank you, Brian. All right. So now we go on to business, follow-up to legal counsel response.
I'd like to make a motion to distribute the legal response that we received from our attorney to the public.
Make it public.
Make it public, yes.
Make it public. All right. Thank you, Jared. Do I have a second? By Ginny, any discussion before I do roll call? Okay. See and none. Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Heather, yes. So motion passed. Do you want to talk about it?
Yeah, I, I think actually it might make sense if the board is in agreement that I would say, why don't we give a, a high-level summary of the legal opinion? The, the question specifically was whether the CDC has the ability from a federal perspective to require masks on school buses. So the board will recall that I had shared at our last meeting or the one before that CDC has said that all masks, all school buses, kids have to wear masks on school buses at all times. So we put that question to our attorneys at the board's request. And Mr. Gross, you want to give the high-level summary, please?
Sure.
And then we'll include the letter in the public minutes.
Right.
That seems the, the proper way to do that.
Yeah, the, the short answer was that yes, the CDC does have authority to enact such a regulation or rule or law with respect to school buses and, and the wearing of masks. It, it basically, the opinion stated that because school buses are public conveyances, they fall within the CDC's order. This, and furthermore, because the CDC, under federal laws, is allowed to promulgate rules, et cetera, to prevent communicable diseases, it was within their authority to do so. That's, that's really the, the gist of it. I did provide. People want to, I passed my copy around if people want to take a look at it. But that's, that's the long and the, and the short of it. And, you know, at, at this particular point, again, it'll be part of the minutes. And the school bus company has to obviously comply with those laws. So that's the issue, just like Greyhound or Delta Airlines, they all have to do it. Same thing with airports, you have to wear a mask when you're in an airport and a travel hub, those types of things. So it's consistent with that.
Ellen, you had your hand up.
Yeah, just really quick.
Yeah.
Because I think Scott looked up the inter-intra-state word, which I think is really important for people to know that based on, I guess, the government's definition of inter, it means both inter and intra, between states and within the state. So even though the statute that they refer to says in-interstate spread, it also means within the state spread. And for me, one of the top things that helps, well, that was important to me is that on buses, kids fall shoulder to shoulder.
Mm-hmm.
They're not, there's no way to distance them. Although we have asked parents to, at least for the time being, to drive kids. I don't want to hear anybody complaining about traffic.
Traffic is going to be bad.
Don't want to hear it.
You will know school is in session tomorrow.
Yes.
You'll know.
Oh, yeah. But I think that's something else for people in general to be aware of. You know, they shoulder to shoulder.
Right. And we're consolidating, because we don't have enough.
Oh, okay.
We don't have enough drivers, so our buses have more kids on them.
And so, that's fine. I, I don't know if anybody...
Thank you. No, because masks are mandated on a bus. And we didn't deviate from that, from the plan. But we wanted to know legally what we were required to do. Jared, go ahead.
Just notating in this legal opinion that it does not articulate that intrastate is the same as interstate as defined in the legal opinion that's been provided to us.
What Scott's...
Yeah.
Though people have looked it up. Again, we're not lawyers, that's why I rely on the lawyers. I'm concerned that members in our community will look at this and say, wait a minute. This still doesn't say whether the CDC has authority to grant or has authority to articulate specifics within a state border. I'm worried that our, our constituents will continue to say that, continue to see that and cause confusion or potential misinformation. I would like to have a, an actual legal opinion from our lawyers that talks about the specifics of intrastate travel. And even in here, I cannot see the word "public conveyance." I do not see those words together. Those are two concerns that I have with this opinion. And again, I'm just saying this because I know our constituents are going to also ask those questions. So I'd like to make a motion to follow up for a legal opinion on the definition and if they have authority for intrastate travel within our borders. Or if it's an advisory opinion that the CDC would be giving us.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
By Ellen, any other discussion before I take a roll call?
Yeah, Heather?
Yes. Go ahead, Dan.
Can Scott read the CFR, the federal CFR that defines what they considered? Because the order from the CNT said interstate. And so I think you had looked it up earlier, if you can read it into the record, so this would be helpful.
I can. So according to the legal opinion, they were quoting CDC's authority, which is 42 CFR 70.1. And interstate traffic means the movement of any conveyance or the transportation of persons or property, including any portion of such movement or transportation that is entirely within a state or possession. Two, from a point of origin in any state or possession to a point of destination in any other state or possession. Or three, between a point of origin and a point of destination in the same state or possession, but through any other state possession or contiguous foreign country.
All right. So that, number one, appeared pretty clear to me. It's intrastate as well as interstate. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Go ahead. Terry, did you?
Sorry, I think that's what they were trying to summarize, with the traveling on any conveyance into or within the United States, whether it's between states or within the states.
Yeah, but the, I would just, no, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, no, no. That's all right. You can comment to...
Yeah, I, I just refer Ms. Chair again. This, this is in response to section three of what we're given, which is 42 CFR, section 70 dash two, not 70 dash one, where they specifically put in foreign and intrastate spread of communicative diseases. So again, I don't know if we're referencing the right spot. I have a lot of respect for our business administrator, for all of our faculty and staff. But he's not in a, he's on Esquire. And I would like to have that legal opinion from a subject matter expert.
Go ahead, Ginny. Thank you, Jared.
I, I kind of think that on a school bus, it kind of doesn't matter whether it's, like, we have the legal definition of the CDC and intern. What we have are kids sitting really close together on a bus, so they can't socially distance or come under any of the other guidelines that they're supposed to, to be safe. So it seems to me that, that they really need to have the masks for, for their own safety because of the conditions that we have on buses. For that, and for the fact that we're really low on bus drivers, and I would hate to have any bus driver not want to drive a bus because kids weren't masked on it, because we're so short of buses now. So I, I kind of wonder why we would be looking for those just really tiny loopholes when our kids are sitting on top of each other on the buses.
Thank you, Ginny. Oh, go ahead, Shane.
Um, I have one question, one comment.
Mm-hmm.
Brian, the mask mandate, would this apply to athletics as well or extracurriculars?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
My comment is, I spent most of my summer watching students get on and off buses. I watched how close they are together. I saw how small the vessel of the bus is. So for me, seeking a further legal opinion doesn't make a lot of sense. I think the amount of time they're on a bus is short. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Shane. Janelle, and then Jared. Just bring the microphone closer to you, so you could speak into it. Thank you.
I guess I have a question for Jared. If we sought the legal opinion and it came back, the same as Scott just explained, would that appease you with this? And feeling settled that our constitu- constituents would be appeased?
Do you have anything to add for you?
Well, I, I know that all questions go to the chair, but I'll be happy to, to say. I, I, I don't want to give the impression that I'm inferencing that we shouldn't be wearing masks on the school bus. This question specifically came up because it was used as, as authority for us to shield ourselves, to say that this should be done. And I just want to make sure that we confirm whether it's true information or misinformation that we're hiding behind to say whether we should actually mask. Do I think we should mask on a school bus? I mean, that's my opinion, and I'll vote accordingly. But this was presented to us to say, this shall happen due to a CDC edict. Now, I said during that meeting, if it's for other reasons like contractual with the school bus, completely different story. But the only explanation that was given to us is because this was due to a CDC edict that we must follow. And that is the only reason why I've actually raised this as a legal opinion or to have a legal opinion. Not to say that we should or should not wear masks, and, and what my opinion and is mine, but I want to make sure that our constituencies have the right information so that they can make the most informed decision for themselves as they move forward. That's what my intent is.
Thank you, Jared. Well, I guess in some way is contractual, because the bus company has to follow the federal guidelines. Correct? You hang on one second, Dan.
I think that if, if the premise is that the Goffstown Truck Center is required to follow the...
Then.
that's exactly what we're.
Right. All right, Dan, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say that for me, it's three hundred and twenty-five bucks or three hundred and fifty bucks an hour to ask the lawyer a question. That's not going to get us any further in the debate. If we want to debate the mask, then table the motion and make a motion about doing masks, if you really want to do that. But otherwise than that, I don't want to pay the lawyer any more money to get an answer that's not going to help us. I'd rather spend the money on something else.
Thank you, Dan. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, we've had a lot of discussion. So I'm going to take a roll call, if everybody is good. Oh, go ahead, Janelle.
The Jared question. My other question was, if it came back the latter, that, you know, we're not under CDC jurisdiction, would that change the board's decision to follow the CDC's guidelines? I was just curious to get a feel on the board, how everybody else is feeling about this.
I can go first.
Go ahead, Jared.
Honestly, I don't think I can answer that question until I have a response. It's hypothetical, but I don't want to lock myself in to say this is what my opinion is until I have that information back. That's my honest comment.
Anyone else want to chime in before I do roll call?
I'll say that the further opinion would not change my mind.
Oh, Ellen, sorry, I couldn't see your finger.
I'm sorry. Listening carefully to this discussion, okay. I think my, my mind has changed simply from where it was because of the very, very close proximity that these kids are in. I think my mind has altered a little bit. I still have a real hard time, I'm just me, with mandating something. I, I have from the beginning objected to the government's handling of this. But making it optional, it's not wear it or don't wear it, wear it, but making it optional gives people the choice. And I'm so proud of choosing how to live your lives with these, in this stuff. That's, okay, thank you. That helped me goes all the way around in my head. I went all the way around.
All right, so the motion is Jared would like to get legal counsel. So we have a second, we've discussed, so I'm going to do roll call. Rheta?
No.
Jenny?
No.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
No.
Shane?
No.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
No.
Heather, no. So motion failed. Thank you, everyone. Is there any more to discuss on that?
Nope.
All right, so new business commodity bill.
We made this public, right?
Yes, it'll be on the minutes as well, for everybody to read. So Scott, that's you.
Sure, every, at the end of last school year, you authorized myself and the superintendent to conduct commodity bids for paper, oil, and propane, and also to accept those bids in the best interest of the district. For the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year, I wanted to let you know that the paper bid was awarded to the incumbent vendor, which is W.B. Mason. And it was substantial, it wasn't even close. The two dollars and ninety-four cents a ream versus four dollars and forty-nine cents a ream of paper. So that was kind of a no-brainer. So I did accept W.B. Mason as the vendor for paper. The next piece of paper was our oil bids. And we had four vendors submit bids. And the incumbent, once again, Dead River, was awarded the bid price of two dollars and twenty-nine cents per gallon for this school year. And that is up from a dollar seventy-nine from last year. So just wanted to let you know with respect to that. So again, I did, I did select, the next closest for oil was Irving Energy at two dollars and thirty-seven cents. Lastly, was propane. And you'll recall that we have had just incredibly great propane rates for the last couple of years. So we bid out, not for this current year, but for the next school year. Propane's a little bit different than, than oil in terms of there are propane futures, and you can, you can lock in, sometimes, some cases upwards of two to three years. But for next school year's budgeting purposes, there were three vendors that submitted bids, Dead River, Irving, and Feral Gas. And Dead River, who is the current incumbent, was the lowest bid at one point five seven nine cents per gallon. And they too were, were accepted. I should let you and the community know that we do a combined bid with the town of Goffstown and also this year with the town of New Boston. So we go in kind of as a consortium to try to get the best possible rate. And it's been, it's been pretty good for us. These are very difficult. The prices have been fluctuating. I keep track of them all the time. And, you know, there are opportunities, and you as the board, you have seized upon that. I mean, a couple of years ago, when we were able to lock in at a dollar sixteen, you decided not to go out to bid and take that price. This year, because we didn't go out to bid in a couple of years, we decided to go out to bid, and this is what the result that we've got. It does have its advantages and disadvantages. One, you're opening it up for a public, you know, opportunity to bid. The downside is that we did have an opportunity in April, May to lock in at like a dollar thirty-something. I think it was a dollar thirty-seven. It came in twenty cents higher. But that's what happens in these markets, you know? So I do think that what the board has done in the past in terms of try to seize on a good rate is good. I also think it's a good thing to go out to bid every once in a while. So it just, it's sometimes the way that it goes. So I did accept all three of those. And then when you see your budget for this upcoming year, you're going to see about a seventy thousand dollar increase in your propane costs because of that. So it's significant. It's not, and that's not a default item, how I use it. You know, so it's considered new spending because I look at the current year's budget. I don't look at our consumption as formulating the default. So it's going to be seventy thousand roughly in new, new budget dollars. Any questions?
Go ahead, Jared.
Just, Ms. Chair, if we can ever remind, or reminded, can we actually lock these in for multiple years based on these commodity bids?
We have, but I don't know why we're not.
Yes and no. Oil, no, you cannot. So oil is a yearly, they won't go out more than a year. Propane, this year, they wouldn't go out into a third year. Whereas two or three years ago, Jared, they did. This year, they felt it was too volatile, but they didn't, they didn't want to do it. So I didn't get any, any bids beyond the twenty-two, twenty-three year.
Are you good?
Yeah, I'm good. We don't need a motion to accept these.
You should.
We should, yeah.
Yep, and you can do it as one lump sum, you know.
Does anybody have any other questions on any of the, go ahead, Jared.
I'll make a motion to accept the commodity bids as presented.
Okay, by Janelle, second. Any other discussion before I do roll call?
Yeah, I got one question.
Don't answer. Go ahead, Dan.
So the question would be, Scott, did you already accept these because we gave you the authority to accept them?
Yes, I did.
So then the motion to accept it is moved. The motion should be to.
Affirm my decision, basically.
To affirm the decision.
All right, so Jared.
Well, not affirm, but to, to acknowledge and accept it.
Scott's decision.
So I'm not sure if, the current motion, I think, was to simply, I mean, it's not an accurate motion for what has actually happened.
So just confirm.
Yeah, I thought I said, yeah, I, yeah, I'm good with that.
Is that what?
What do you want it to say, Jared?
So I amended my motion to what Dan had presented as my amendment.
Would be to affirm the acceptance of the bid.
To reaffirm the acceptance of the bid as presented by our business administrator.
And Janelle, second. Okay, you got that, Denise?
And Dan did not use the word affirm.
Okay, Dan. All right, we, we're going to do roll call.
That's important.
Thank you, Dan. Rheta?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Shane, sorry, I looked at her. Sorry, Shane. Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. We're unanimous, motion passed. All right.
I thought you were messing with the order there.
Well, I'm making sure everybody is awake. All right, so the next is proposal to increase, to substitute rates of pay. So Brian, that is you, I think?
Thank you. I'm going to invite Mrs. McGrath up to the microphone down by my distinguished colleague, Mr. Hagner.
Okay.
And as Kate is making her way up, the board will recall that we've had tremendous challenges in finding a number of positions, including substitute teachers. So to that end, we have a recommendation for the board's consideration to look at increasing the rate of pay for substitute teachers. And with that, I'll hand it off to Mrs. McGrath.
Thank you, Brian. Would you like me to pass the memo out to the board?
I'll do it.
So this is a memo that I had prepared for the superintendent with my proposal. So every year, we do benchmarking of all of our positions to first and foremost understand our competitiveness with other districts. And substitutes are always part of that evaluation. And recently, after conducting benchmarking and because of the substitute shortage, a number of districts have made their rates increased over the last two years. So the first table that's on the memo presents for you what our current rates of pay is for our substitutes, as well as the average of the benchmark of the districts that participated in the survey. So it is outlined by category, and you can see that in each of the categories, we are currently below the benchmark average. We had a fill rate that averaged about fifty percent. That ebbed and flowed over the course of the year, and it also ebbs and flows by day of the week. But on average, for FY twenty-one, we were only able to fill about fifty percent of our vacant positions that required a substitute. So with that, with those two factors, the fact that we don't have enough substitutes to fill all of our vacancies, as well as the fact that we're below our peers in benchmarking, I have asked for the consideration of the board to make the following increases to our rates of pay. Nurses remain an incredibly difficult substitute position to fill. We are competing with the hospitals and other healthcare facilities that pay nurses a per diem rate far in excess of what we're doing for substitutes. So where we don't have that similarity in some of our other positions, nurses are able to get per diem work at a much higher rate of pay. I am proposing that we increase our nurse daily subrate to seventy-five percent of bachelor step one. So if we just set it at bachelor step one, it would continue to progress and increase annually as the teacher contract rate does within the master agreement, at seventy-five percent of bachelor step one. That rate for FY twenty-two would be one sixty-five, fifty-four. Currently, it's one twenty-five, so it would be an increase of about forty dollars a day. You can see the current benchmark average is a hundred and fifty-two dollars. The second proposal is to increase the para and teacher rates to eighty-five dollars from seventy dollars for uncertified substitutes, and from eighty dollars to ninety-five dollars for certified substitutes. You may recall, a couple of years ago, I presented to the board a proposal that if we had substitutes who were working twenty or more days per year, that after twenty days, they then increased their rate. So this would also increase the daily rate for individuals who do commit more days per year to us. But with this proposal, I'm proposing that we increase the number of days that's required to thirty days per year and to sustain that rate going into the next year to forty. So we really need our substitutes who are currently active to engage for more days than they're currently doing. And the hope would be that to maintain that rate and to get the higher rate going forward, that they would work more days for us, thus filling more of our vacancies. The next proposal is with regard to our long-term substitutes. So a long-term substitute is an individual, a teacher specifically, a certified teacher, who fills a role for more than twenty days. So usually, those will happen in things like maternity leaves, medical leaves of absence, where we know that a teacher is going out on FMLA or some other long-term leave due to a known situation. So currently, the way that our long-term substitutes are paid is they get the certified rate of pay for the first twenty days. And then on day twenty-one, they increase to the bachelor step one rate on a per diem basis. This proposal asks the board to consider that if a substitute is known to be working past day twenty at the start of the assignment, that we start the long-term subrate on day one. So typically, these individuals are not coming from our current pool of substitutes. Those folks are really folks who want to work, you know, per diem, they want to pick their schedule. There are days of the week that are better for them. They're not looking for longer-term assignments. The long-term subs that we tend to pick up are through advertisement and for certified teacher who, for one reason or another, whether they're a mid-year graduate and they haven't found a full-time teaching job, or for other reasons, they haven't found a job yet. So to attract and better able our pool of applicants, it would be helpful to start that long-term subrate on day one. Again, if we know in advance that it's going to go past day twenty. And then the last piece of the proposal is something.
Heather, could I ask a question while the topic is hot?
Sure, go ahead, Dan.
So for assignments for the long term, you want to start the higher rate on day one. What happens then if we have someone who is not slated in the same classroom, but they're in a whole bunch of different classrooms potentially, who start at the lower rate on day twenty, but they work twenty-one days in a row? Would that not be fair to them?
So Dan, the nature of, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead, answer.
Thank you. The nature of the long-term subassignment is very different than the per diem substitute who comes in and fills a vacancy because of a sick day. So the long-term substitute is turned over the classroom. They're responsible for lesson planning, they're responsible for grading, they have a regular and fixed schedule, they're communicating with parents, they become the teacher of record during that period of time. So the, the rate is meant to reflect the increased level of responsibility as opposed to the per diem sub, who may work twenty days in a row, but is handed lesson plans, who comes in and basically administers the work that the teacher has left for them. And that's the distinction.
Ah, very important information for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Go ahead, Ellen.
Teacher sub, teacher sub. I probably misreading this. Oh, no, there we go. You have nurses would be getting one sixty-five, is that what you're saying?
That's the proposal. That's currently seventy-five percent of bachelor step one.
Okay, and the teachers would be step one, bachelor step one, two-twenty?
Yep, at a hundred percent.
Okay, I wasn't reading wrong. When we're talking long-term subs, is that, or you're talking twenty days or thirty days, is that in a row or cumulative through the year? So like, three days a week for seven weeks or something, then the person gets the adjusted pay?
So to Dan's question and the important distinction between a long-term sub and a sub who just works regular days, the, the one who is picking up per diem assignments and can make their own schedule, we don't necessarily know if they're going to work twenty days in a row or twenty-one days. They get the per diem daily subrate. Am I answering your question?
Long-term sub is the person that becomes a teacher?
Yes.
For whatever the days are.
Filling in for a long-term.
It is not the sub that comes in and is there maybe the first three months of the school year, a total of. school year, a total of 20 days, being different teachers. That is not considered-
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Want to make sure I understood that. And are we making any difference between the educational level for these teacher subs?
So we have the certified and uncertified rate, but we are not making distinction based on their professional experience and/or education.
Or bachelor's, master's, master's plus, just certified and not certified.
Correct.
And we do have different rates for those two?
Yes, so the current uncertified rate is $70, and the certified rate is $80.
Okay, and what is it being proposed to be?
$85 and $95.
Right.
Oh, I thought it was 220, 73.
I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood your question. I thought you were asking me the per diem amounts.
Is the teacher sub going to be making more or less or the same as a nurse?
Less.
Why?
Again, because the nurse is gonna come in and do the full duties of the nurse on that day. A per diem substitute is going to come in and have lesson plans that are given to them, they're going to administer what the teacher has left for them, whereas a nurse is fulfilling the RN duties, medically assessing students, you can't plan for what's gonna be presented to you over the course of the day. And we're also competing with a different market for a nurse substitute.
So the thought is that a substitute teacher, if they're worth anything, doesn't do anything but read the notes a teacher leaves?
Those were, that wasn't my inference.
I mean, leave the, I guess I object to the making that distinction between a certified educator with a master's degree in education coming in and having to do less responsibilities, teaching a class or a bunch of classes, depending on the grade level, than a nurse has. I think they're at least equal, having done it.
Ellen, Ellen, your nurse may have a master's degree also, and she's responsible for giving medications, for doing life support, you know, like, she's not just some flunky walking in the door.
I'm not saying they are.
Yes, so-
I'm saying they're at least equal in the responsibilities they have with these kids in the classrooms all day long.
But the thing is, is you're not getting nurses to come in because they go to other places where they can make an awful lot more money for the responsibility that they have ongoing.
And it's their license.
And their license is on the line also. And we really need nurses in our school right now because of what's going on with-
We also need subs.
Absolutely, we do.
We do.
Yep. Absolutely. So I saw Shane's hand up a little while ago.
Yeah, so I have a question. Do, have we given any thought to hiring, like, permanent in-house substitutes for our buildings?
Yeah, so the last bullet, which I hadn't had a chance to get to yet.
We can wait if you're getting there.
So, no, if there were other questions on what I had already presented, otherwise, the final piece of the proposal, I'll jump into, if the board is comfortable with that?
Yep, go ahead, Kate, thank you.
So Shane, we do give considerable thought to that on a regular basis, and whether or not for substituting, if we'd be able to attract and retain folks who would be willing to come in and have that fluidity of any various assignment where we need them on a regular basis. Last year, we did something similar to that, and this last bullet is proposing that we continue to do that. So what we did was, we said, if there are substitutes who will commit regularly every week to specific days, they would, out of the gate, get a higher rate of pay. So regardless of whether or not a per diem call went out saying we need somebody because of COVID, we knew we were gonna have quarantines, we already started the year with staff shortages, we knew that we were gonna need extra folks on deck. So that worked very well in our buildings, they very much appreciated having that support. And I'm asking for the board to consider allowing us to do that again this year. So that increased rate of pay would be $115 per regularly scheduled day. If they then also picked up per diem assignments on top of, so like, I said I can work Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and a couple of weeks here and there, I may pick up a Thursday, they got the per diem rate. They didn't get that additional rate because it was the security of relying on them that we paid them the higher rate of pay for. We had 39 substitutes who worked a regular schedule last year. And again, it was incredibly helpful to our buildings. So we haven't gone full-year, every-day report. That's something we'll monitor and watch, but especially with COVID, we want at least this hybrid model to continue.
And Madam Chair, I have a clarification.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you for that. Our long-term subs, the ones that are in charge of contacting parents, doing lesson planning, now they are certified in that area?
Yes.
So I think that's an important distinction to make between the potentially certified or uncertified per diem subs and the long-term subs. Because I understand the confusion with the teacher and nurse thing too. I think the, the thing to remember is that the nurse needs to be RN certified, whereas the per diem sub isn't necessarily certified. But we do have the long-term subs who must be certified in that area for the extent, for the duration of their time taking over the class.
Thank you, that's a really important distinction. So going back to the certified rate of pay, I could be an elementary certified teacher getting a certified rate to teach a high school class, or covering at the high school, yes. Whereas the RN is coming in and taking the full duty responsibilities of the RN assignment, regardless of where they're going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. Any other questions, comments for Kate? Ginny, did you have your hand up?
Oh, no.
No, sorry. All right, so you have a proposal, and you need a decision. Go ahead, Jared.
So just, just looking at this and specifically the last bullet, I remember the conversation very well about increasing the substitute pay due to some COVID limitations on being able to retain or even get some substitutes. The question that I have is, as we look at this proposal, is this a stock gap only to last one year, which is why we increased the rate of pay for last year? Or is this something that you're looking to keep in perpetuity as we move forward as part of the budgeting process?
So the last bullet is specifically relative to COVID coverage and the need for that continuity within our buildings. The remainder of the proposal is requested in perpetuity.
So if I may follow-
Yeah, go ahead, Jared.
So kind of, I think Ellen hit it, but I just wanted to make sure that I'm reaffirming. So the nurse subrate is being proposed to 165, 54, and would increase as regular contracts increase because it's tied to that?
Yes.
But the para and subs would not increase year to year as the nurse? So we'd be going to an $85 for uncertified and $95 for certified, for both the para sub and the teacher sub?
Yes.
For those? Even though that they're currently $70 and $80, so that's an increase of $15 for each-
Yes.
-that we'd have to absorb.
Yes.
My, my additional follow-up is more of a budgeting question. And I know that I'm gonna have to concentrate on the business administrator to at least lend some thought into this. I know that our substitute line for budget is closely watched by our budget committee. And so I'm not saying that this isn't warranted, but how much of an increase would we be looking at increasing our substitute line that they actually cut last year for this fiscal year, if we approve this?
Well, it's a couple of things for background. So we ran some numbers, and what happened was the budget committee cut the substitute line from $270 to $250,000. And last year, we ended up spending a little over $325,000. The prior year, it was 180, but note that we were not in school after March. And then the year before that, we were over $300,000. So conservatively, like, super conservatively, that number needs to be 300. Realistically, probably three and a quarter, maybe a little more. That said, on some of these, we would do budget transfers. So a long-term sub, you know, we know we're not gonna have, you know, more than likely, we would be able to transfer some funds, you know, here and there. But I think that, from a budgetary perspective, we gotta go from the current 250 to easily 300. I wouldn't feel comfortable going lower than that with this proposal, and it could easily be three and a quarter.
So maybe a comment if I may?
Go ahead.
So Scott, as we're preparing our budgets as they come up, I would love to see kind of the empirical data of the substitutes that we've had before COVID, and match that up with the rates that are being proposed if they're accepted, to make sure that we have the true budget requirement needed for our substitute line as we go forward, so that we do not have to do line item transfers. Would be my ask, if this is approved.
So can you be, I'll get with you after, but I just need a little more specificity in terms of what you want. But we do have historical numbers-
I know we have empirical data of how many substitutes, and nurse substitutes that we've had every year.
That I'd have to get with Kate.
I'm sure we have that somewhere.
Yeah.
As part of a payroll.
Yeah.
Are you set, Jared?
Yeah.
For now? Okay, that's fine. Ellen, no, because if you're thinking of something else, go ahead, Ellen.
Two things also in those numbers for the subs account for how many times we didn't hire the sub, because we couldn't find one. And if we had hired somebody, it would have been more, cost us more. I think it's an important factor. Two, I'm probably reading this wrong. Are we, is this proposing that a para and a teacher sub would get paid the same?
They do currently, Ellen, so there's not a differentiated rate between a substitute who comes in and substitutes for a para or a teacher.
Why?
I don't know that I have a good answer for that, but I, I will say that many districts do it that way.
Yeah, I know.
When we sign our substitutes up, we ask them to cover both. There are more substitutes who are probably a little bit more hesitant to be a paraprofessional because they don't necessarily understand what the role is. And it's important to incentivize them to make sure that we have coverage in both instances.
And if I could just add to that, remember, these are covering IEP ordered services, so we don't want to be in a situation where students' IEP calls for a service that we're not providing. That is problematic.
I get that, but I still, the para and the teacher have, some paras have no education or just a year or two. A teacher can have a master's degree, and we're paying them the same, and with different levels of responsibilities?
So the responsibility of the job is different, however, it's important to remember that somebody with the same credentials can do either role. So you don't have to be a certified teacher to be a teacher substitute, is another way of saying that.
Shane, go ahead.
I'm just trying to kind of clarify. So someone who is subbing to be a teacher on a per diem basis could have no licensing, no credentials at all, but they could fill the role of paraprofessional or substitute. And I think the argument could be made that subbing as a paraprofessional is probably more hands-on and more intensive than the substitute teacher.
Certainly could be.
Depending on the situation.
Yep, based on my experience.
I think the assignments vary so widely on a day-to-day basis, it's really meant to be covering all possible.
Right, and it's important to remember that a per diem substitute teacher is more or less following a lesson plan that's provided by the teacher. They aren't writing their own lesson plan, they're not developing curriculum, they're looking at a seating chart, they're taking attendance, they're following the lesson plans provided. So I think you need to keep that in mind too, as far as we're thinking of what they're doing in the different roles. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane, for that. Anyone else? Thoughts, comments? So you would like a decision on this tonight, Kate?
That would be helpful, so that we could communicate what our subs will be paid for this year. School starts tomorrow, so unless the board needed further information, or if it was possible to make a decision, that would be desirable.
So what does everybody-
Final financial inquiry, if I may?
Sure, go ahead, Dan.
So Scott, we have a $250,000 budget. We spent three and a quarter last year, three, almost 326. This particular plan, if adopted, could possibly add another 30, which means we're gonna be roughly 100K under or overspent on that budget line. You indicate that we get teacher turnover money available. What's the available funds to cover this line? In your expectation?
It would come from a variety of sources. So right now, we have unfilled para lines, para positions. We have some savings in our health insurance lines. We have some teachers that, you know, we have the teacher turnover. So I, I think, you know, this is something that, you know, to me, is kind of a must because we are just, we're desperate for substitutes. I'm not concerned that I wouldn't be able to find the savings in other budget lines because, you know, the ones that I just rattled off, I could easily, I could find it from there. So that's, that's where I would go. Health insurance first.
Excellent, thank you.
All right. So we've discussed, we've asked. Kate would like a decision tonight, is that something we can do? Or is there more questions?
I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward with it.
All right.
We've seen this over a number of years.
Yes.
And if, if no one else wants to kick in, I would make a motion, we adopt the request of Kate for the proposed increases to substitute rates of pay. For the '21, '22 school year.
Now, does that include the second part, or we'd want to do a second motion for that, because that's just for COVID with your, the back part of this? Is that, can we do one motion, or you want to do two? Kate?
It could be one motion with that caveat, or you could do two separate motions.
All right. So Dan, the back part of the paper, do you have it?
What, I'm at a loss to what we're talking about for COVID.
I just want to make, because you just mentioned the teachers, the subs, but there was a second part on the back that, for COVID.
It's the last bullet on the front, Heather?
Oh, the last bullet on the front. I was looking at the back, okay.
So instead of $95, or $80, or $85, due to COVID for only this school year, this fiscal year, we would increase it to $115.
So just-
Right, that was, that was part of my-
Okay, I just want to make sure that we included everything that Kate's asking.
It's, I am referring to the paper memorandum-
Okay.
-that Kate sent to Brian that we just, dated August 24th, 2021, that we just discussed.
All right, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion by Dan, a second by Ginny. Any other discussion? Go ahead, Jared.
Just going forward, and I can completely appreciate the state that we're in, but if we're having an increase in pay or an increase, I would like to see with this, an actual transfer of where money's coming from to cover this in our budget? Because as it's currently stated, we would be passing this, but we do not have money in our budget to support the motion we would be passing. I would just like, in the future, to have a complimentary item to say, this is where the money's coming from, and have that as a transfer item as well.
Scott, is that something we can do in the future?
Sure.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. We've had a lot of discussion. I'm gonna do roll call.
Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
No.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So one no, rest, yes, motion pass. Thank you, Kate.
So at the next meeting, I'll have a budget transfer line for you. That's what I love to hear.
Thank you, Scott. All right, so the next, the next is a board authorization request. I need a board motion to grant the business administrator authorization to make payments out of sequence for the 2021, 2022 school year, and to notify the board of such payments at the next successful school board meeting. And to notify the board of such payments at the next successful school board meeting. I have a motion by Ginny, do I have a second by Terry? I, any discussion? Go ahead Jared.
Just because I know that we aren't doing it for the superintendent, but are we looking to have this authorization in perpetuity going forward?
I don't think you can do it in perpetuity, it has to be done every year. So what this allows me to do, and just for disclosure, I did one of these out of sequences today. I had to authorize a payment of $10,000 for Arbiter, which is our, the way we pay our sports officials. Because our account was under $4,000 and we're starting the season. So they needed, it takes, sometimes with the US mail now, it's taking like two weeks for things to get processed, it's nuts. So I, I could not wait another two. So, but this is something that you have authorized me for the last couple of years. You've given me this, this authority along with the COVID one. But this allows me to do what I just said, to authorize a payment out of sequence and, you know, and let you know. So it's going to show up on your manifest at the next school board meeting, you'll see Arbiter $10,000 payment. But it gives me that opportunity to make these payments in these more or less emergency type situations.
I guess why isn't this part of a change of a policy or something along those lines if we're going to continue to do it as we.
Perfect, I was just going there.
Sorry, I'll, I interject it, go ahead.
I think he was going to ask the same question.
If I, if I may, the.
Go ahead Scott.
There are statutes that say that technically the school board is the authority to do this. And then, then you would, you're giving me a vote so that the auditors can look back and say, yep, there was an affirmative vote. Yes, you could argue that a policy might work, but I'm not so sure. I would feel more comfortable if there was an annual vote of an existing board because that board it could change, you know? And you may not want to, but I, I don't see a harm in, in just doing an annual vote myself.
The reason why I ask is my recollection is that we introduced this as part of the COVID response program that we had. And it sounds like it's, it's going to be used after the COVID response.
It was before too.
It was before. Maybe it was just so long ago I don't remember.
Yeah, it was before, okay.
COVID is taken over.
But there's no COVID on here.
No, it's not.
Nothing to do with COVID.
This was before COVID.
Oh, no, 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 I know, we've been doing that since before, but the COVID things are not on here.
No, because we're not in a state of emergency anymore.
I got it.
So I'd like to make a motion to grant the business.
We already have a motion by Ginny, a second.
Seconded.
By you.
I would like to make a complimentary amendment to that and remove the next successful school board meeting.
Oh yeah.
So you want to remove the last, to notify the board of such payments at the next.
Period, payments, period.
Yeah.
Just payment.
Payments at the. Oh no.
Yeah, I think I'm thinking of something different.
Are you mending or no?
I stand by the person that presented it.
Okay, all right, so no amendment. Motion as I read, I have a, motion, I have a second, I'm going to do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Ginny? Jared?
Yes.
Janelle? Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, motion pass, thank you. So now we have school staffing.
Well, administrative request?
Yes, go ahead.
I would like the policy committee to see if there is a policy that we might be able to amend that would incorporate this kind of wording so that we don't have to keep doing this.
Okay.
It's almost like, from what I'm looking, it's almost like the credit card thing. We authorize credit cards to be used.
Right.
This is kind of like the same thing. And then we can codify it.
Yeah, I, I read this wrong Dan initially and I'd like to thank a fellow board member for setting me straight. This is for the full year, I thought this was the one that we had to do every single meeting.
No.
So I, I would like to thank Janelle for again, setting me straight on, on that.
We changed it this time.
Once a year.
Right, and what I'm concerned, what I'm concerned about is this is for the school year.
Yes.
But the board makeup is modified off school year. So it's, in March, we have an election and we could have different people. And so we're, we're at a different timing. And that's why I think a policy would be more adaptable and work through those nuances.
Got it, we'll, we'll do some digging on that Dan.
Okay. All right, thank you Dan, so now we're going to move on to.
Thank you.
School staffing.
Okay, for notifications, we have two leave of absences, one for Sarah Mullen and one for Alyssa.
Seiya.
Seiya, thank you. Notification only, long-term substitute notification only for Anna Lad at Bartlett. And we have a few track changes, congratulations for track changes to Catherine Newman, Catherine Clark, Sarah Matatol and Jennifer Rochelou.
You sent cards.
We, if we haven't yet, we will shortly, but we probably already did.
Brian, I should have put the Alyssa Seiya under approval. That is not, that's a request under the collective bargaining agreement, not under FMLA or some other protective league. And I made that error this morning.
Okay, so the, and, so we're asking the board to approve Alyssa Seiya.
Yes, please.
S-A-I-A.
Thank you.
At Maple Ave for a one-year leave.
Thank you. My apologies.
Okay. So why don't we do that motion first before we get into the, go ahead.
These two leave absences, when do they start? One says September 7th.
Right.
So that's like in weeks and the other one doesn't have a date. These kids coming in to no teacher, I mean, what's going on?
No, we have a plan.
We have a plan.
When does Seiya start?
It's effective immediately.
Immediately.
And we have a sub?
There's currently a certified teacher covering the classroom and the job is posted.
All right, Jared, did you have your hand up?
Nope.
Okay. All right, so we need a motion to approve.
To approve the leave of absence.
Of just Alyssa.
Yes.
So moved.
All right, so we have a motion by Jared, we have a second by Shane, I'll do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Ginny? Jared?
Yes.
Janelle? Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
My hesitancy is that, this is last second.
Well, I don't know when it came to, like, came to you guys, but.
If you happen to talk about it in non-public, if the board needs additional information.
This is last second, I, I don't, and school starts tomorrow. And the board's just now being told we have teachers not coming back. I, I'm having a problem with that unless there's some real urgent something that's going on.
Well, there might be and Kate would have to discuss that with us in non-public. So I have a motion, I have a second, I just need a vote.
I'll say okay.
What did you say?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, motion pass, thank you.
Okay, continuing on, teacher resignations, Melanie Calley from Mountain View, Jenna Holden from Mountain View and Donna Corolian from the high school.
Wow. Do we want to do resignations first or, I mean, sometimes we do them all together.
If you want to do them all together, I'll continue down.
Wait, Retta had her hand up.
I, I just have a question, there's a date of June 30th. Is there, is there a reason why we're just hearing about this now?
Kate?
Postdated. So we received them after, but they are not starting this school year.
Okay. Okay, so we didn't know, so we didn't find out about it last board meeting?
Correct.
Okay. All right, do we want to go, oh, Janelle?
Do you have a replacement for the school counselor, Melanie?
Yeah, I guess we'll go into the nominations, is there one in there?
We do have a, we do have a replacement.
It looks like they were all replaced.
And in fact, I had not let those teachers out of their contract until we had a replacement secured.
This is what you told us last time, okay, that makes sense now. Okay. All right, so do you want to continue, let's do the teacher nominations?
Yeah, I'll, I'll continue for teacher nominations on your list, I'm going to have you cross out the last name in this group.
Okay.
If you would please. So for teacher nominations, I have Amy Godet as a new library media specialist at Maple Ave. Lori Brody at Mountain View as a seventh grade math teacher. Kaylee Eastwood at Mountain View as a math and science teacher, grade six. Rachel Knoll, Mountain View school counselor. And our old friend, Mrs. Carey, Barb Carey is called out of the bullpen, back from retirement already. I told you she wouldn't make it very long. And couldn't be more proud, more pleased to welcome Mrs. Carey back as a 50% special ed teacher focusing on math needs for this school year. And as I said, the last name in that category, I'm crossing out and not bringing forward at this time. Do you want me to do the, keep going?
Yeah, why don't we just finish?
Okay, co-curricular sports nominations, this is a golf volunteer, so thank you to Gavin McIn, Masenti?
Sounds good.
Close enough, I apologize, thank you for your service, thank you for volunteering with our athletic program. And many thanks also to Jeff Magis, who is filling in as the girls' B soccer team coach, which is a perennial, hard to find, hard to keep position for us. So thank you to Mr. Magis for that.
All right, so that, the next part is different, all right.
The next part is different.
So do we have any motion for the approvals? Go ahead Shane.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
The 50% special ed math, is that grant funded?
Kate? Scott?
It's, it's just two pillars.
No, not grant funded.
Okay, so it's taking the place of two. Yep, thank you.
All right, everybody good? Anybody else have questions before we take a motion? Do I have a motion to approve?
Yep. I make the motion to approve the teacher resignations, the teacher nominations and the co-curricular sports nominations for 2021, 2022 school year as listed.
Thank you Ginny, do I have a second?
Second.
By Shane? Any other discussion? Go ahead Ellen.
I, I'm not seeing a, a teacher nomination for the teachers that are leaving.
You are.
You, there's a.
I see one there?
Yeah.
School counselor?
Second one down.
You don't see one for the visual arts, that's the only one you don't see.
Maple Ave, one-year leave? There's a, there's a Maple Ave.
Oh, for the, the top, the leave of absence?
The leave of absence.
That's the one that has a substitute that we posted the position.
He already explained that. Right.
So there is not a candidate, a permanent candidate, there is a substitute in that position.
So it's a substitute for the year or are these kids going to have a different sub every couple of days?
Do you want to weigh in on that?
Are we talking about Alyssa?
Yes.
Yep.
Um, so it would be a substitute, so, so currently we have a certified educator from the building who is going to be covering this position. The position has been posted and we are looking for a one-year certified teacher to be the teacher for the entire year.
Kate, do you want to go down the microphone just so people watching can hear what you say? Sorry.
So Kate, if I do my act of listening, you're basically saying that we have someone, an individual, that will teach the class for Alyssa. And then once we hire somebody, that new hire will take over.
Yes.
For the class.
Exactly.
Both certified.
Both are certified, yes.
Can I just follow up?
Yeah, go ahead Shane.
And the, the certified teacher that's filling in, are they being paid extra?
Uh, they're currently on our teacher contract.
Right, but are they, I assume they're picking up another class or?
They're having a change of assignment.
Okay, so we change.
Their current assignment now has a certified substitute backfilling them.
Okay, so.
So we have a number of moving parts.
Did some juggling, okay.
We did some juggling.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you Shane. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion before I do roll call? All right, see and none, Retta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Um, Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So motion passed, we're unanimous. Thank you Kate, you might as well stay put, I don't know if you need it for the next session.
She, she can stay put.
We didn't need to.
Just altogether. So the, the next section, the board had asked at your last meeting for an update on current vacancies. So what Kate has provided on the bottom of the staffing sheet is a list of the current vacancies that we are actively trying to hire. Now, the first one requires a little bit of explanation and the rest of them should not. So the first one, this is a position that the high school has asked for. They are looking for a one-year position to function as a 504 assistance coordinator for this school year. This is a proposal that we have not brought to the school board yet. So the high school has a current vacancy that they have not been able to fill, that they're recommending and this will be brought to the board at your next meeting. So if you ignore the first one, the remainder of these are the current open positions that we have. So we have a preschool teacher at Glen Lake, instructional coach at the elementary level. And that was, that position, we are anticipating an internal candidate. So that, we've kind of put this aside, trying to focus on all the other hiring. And then we have two, four, 10, 13 paraprofessional vacancies that we have not been able to hire.
And one more on the flip side Brian?
And one custodian on the backside, thank you Kate.
No, they're all IEP driven pairs?
Those are all IEP, some of them might be more program based, but we are having exceptional challenges hiring. Kate, anything to expand upon?
Uh, the only thing I would add is food service continues to evaluate their needs and really as school meals get underway. So they do have a number of vacancies, but it was very difficult to relay that to the board in terms of what, because they're really looking at the numbers of meals that they're preparing. And Megan is being very responsive to needs and basing the staffing on that. So there, there is additional food service hiring going on at this time as well.
Inquiry if I may please?
Go ahead Dan.
So would we add the Guffstown High School visual arts position in the vacant area? Because we took a name off tonight?
Kate, we should, right?
Thank you, yes.
And not to give any more information, but that's, that's a candidate that we're not finished the process yet. And I, I think we had hoped that we would be there, but we're not. So that, that's precisely correct Dan, the, the name that I crossed off on the list is for that position.
There's a custodian on the back too, in Mountain View.
And that's just vacancy, right Kate?
Yes.
So maybe an update at the next meeting if you filled any of these, especially with the increase in pay?
And, and we'll see.
Oh, you'll have approvals or recommendations for nominations?
Yeah, and, and so if and when we have notifications for those paraprofessional hires, we'll let you know. But I, I, I think this is pretty reflective of the labor market that we're dealing with. Being a paraprofessional is a hard job with a lot of responsibility for not a lot of pay. And these people are mission critical, we cannot run our schools without our great support staff. So hiring paraprofessionals, hiring custodians, hiring bus drivers, these are all incredible challenges right now. And the labor shortage is such that you're competing now, you know, if you've got a, any number of local, local companies are hiring at 15, $20 an hour because they can't find people. So we're feeling the effects of that and we will continue to feel the effects of that. I didn't, and I don't foresee that going away in the short term.
Thank you Brian. So we're good with staffing for now? Any other questions for Kate? All right, so moving on, any other business that may legally come before the meeting? Wow, two hands. Three hands. Okay, I saw Shane's first, so go ahead.
I just had a question, kind of following up on something that came up last meeting, are we expecting a teacher representative at our next meeting?
We don't have anybody yet. We're still working on that. So we had, last year, last spring, I had one high school teacher who was interested. We have, we haven't opened it back up yet, but that, that needs to happen, so thank you for bringing that up.
Since school will be started, thank you Shane. Scott?
I, I got an email this afternoon about a potential grant opportunity. It's the same grant for energy efficiency that I was able to secure for New Boston. The window is really tight, so that this application I think is due at either, and I think it's October 1. If I waited till the next school board meeting, that would not give me a whole lot of time. So what I'm proposing is I would need your authority to, you know, proceed with the potential of applying for this grant. It's an $80,000 grant from the state of New Hampshire. And I would, it would be used towards the lighting retrofits.
And I would, it would be used towards the lighting retrofits that we're having, that we've done. We've already done some in our gyms, but we've had this company come back and look at other parts of, of this school and some of our other schools. So it's kind of a, to me, it's, I've already written the grant for New Boston. And it wouldn't be a, a massive lift, but I would need your, you know, your, your go-ahead to at least start to work on it. Because I, I couldn't do it within, especially with budget season.
What's the name of the grant, Scott?
It's a, it's the CED, CED grant. Hold on.
I, I remember the acronym. I don't remember.
Yeah, hold on one second. I just.
And we've done some of their lighting already in this district.
It is called the School Energy Efficiency Development Grant. And it's an $80,000 grant.
They give, the state gives to one school district each year.
You think you're going to go back-to-back?
No chance.
You never know.
Oh, you could try.
He's pretty good at grant writing.
I know he is. I know he is. They're going to go, wait a minute. We know that guy's name.
It, it can't hurt because the, kind of, the template is kind of ripped. So it's, uh, and we're doing a very similar project. The only thing that I really need is that Dawn at Tabor has been working with this, this company that we use at New Boston to do an energy assessment. And that's really what I need. So if this gentleman can give us that, which is your return on your investment for, for doing these upgrades, that's like the most important piece to the grant. So if that, if he gets it to me in the month of September, I can submit this grant.
Go ahead, Jared. I, I know your hand is going.
What's the question then? Are you asking for money so that somebody can do the assessment?
Nope. No, I don't need any money. I, I always need authority to apply for grants.
For the grant, to get money.
Yeah, do we actually, do that a grant by grant?
For ones that are outside the norm like this, we do.
We do, okay.
Because sometimes, Jared, some of these grants come with strings attached. So it might have a cost share. There might be programmatic things you're required to do. And we've always done this, that if we're applying for a grant, we kind of, you know, give the board full disclosure of, here's the grant. This one happens to be a give and not a match, but many of them are matches.
But having the ability to match or, or use, you know, we have it in our CRF, I mean, in our CIP already. That's, it, it, you get a lot of points for the grant award when they, when they review them. So we would, we'd be pretty competitive, I think, on this one.
There's no stipulation. Sorry.
Nope.
Yeah, go ahead, Janelle.
No stipulations, nothing we have to follow specifically.
All right. So is, we need a motion. Ginny, go ahead.
I had, following up on Shane's question, did we decide ever whether we were going to offer a stipend for teachers on the board? I know we had talked about it once.
Okay, wait one second.
I need.
Because you're changing subjects on me. Hang on.
Sorry.
No, no, no. I'll come right back to it. Let's figure out the motion on the grant.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Applying for this grant.
All right. So Ellen makes the motion.
Yeah, I think.
Seconded.
And Shane seconded, right? Okay.
Or you, it's better.
No, you got it, Shane. It's all you.
Don't switch subjects.
Denise, did you get that motion? Okay. So any other discussion for Scott before I do roll call? Okay? Reta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle? Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott, let us know. And then Ginny, go ahead.
Yes. So.
Stipend for.
Have we looked into that?
We have not looked into that any further. That would be something important if the board wanted to do any kind of a stipend for teacher reps on the board. I do think that would incentivize people to be interested in participating in that.
It's a lot of time.
I'm trying not to make eye contact with Caleb down at the end of the table, but. Caleb also is, he's performing community service. He's looking for things, you know, for college entrance and acceptance.
It's also, it's the, like, the only student position that's always, like, unopposed. No one.
But Caleb, can I tell you that that's an awesome reference to have on your, on your resume?
Like, we coordinate the next person who runs for this position.
It's, it's very, very highly looked at on your.
And Ginny will write you a letter of recommendation.
Right. So I thought with the teacher stipends, we were trying to figure out the other stuff, right? Because we didn't want to put them ahead, right? I, I thought that's kind of.
I thought there was some talk of doing it out of our budget.
I think that you have a number of ways that you could approach this. This is not anything that we've had conversations with our association about. So minimally, I would like the ability to have a conversation with our union leadership. And, and maybe if the board is amenable to it, we could put this on a future agenda. And we could have a conversation with them prior. We could give some thought to running the formula for what the compensation would be. So we'll, we'll put this on a future agenda. And maybe what I'll do is I'll say the board is exploring this. No promises.
Right. Because I think we need to figure out the other groups that have been.
Is that that thing I was talking about earlier?
Yes. I know. It's.
Kind of, but you, kind of.
Yeah.
Just kind of.
All right. So is there anything else legally? We had a lot of hands raised before. All right. So we have non-public. Which one?
We're going to go under A first.
Okay.
Do we have other business first?
Maybe before we do, I would just like to say thank you again to everybody that came out for public comment, whether they're sending us emails, whether they're coming here, spending time with us. Again, I think that having individuals engaged from the community has, has helped us. So again, I, I would like to say thank you to everybody.
Absolutely.
That has put in the time to engage with us.
Right.
And please come more often.
Yes, absolutely.
Right. Yeah, the doors are open. Go ahead, Ellen.
100% agree, Jared. And it leads to my next topic here. I don't know where the, the topic of, or allowing people to send in emails for somebody else to restart it. I'm thinking COVID.
It is.
I, I think it's time that ends.
Brian and I have been discussing that.
Thank you. And that, these people were here and gave their time. They sat in public.
Yes.
And on TV, and they're speaking. And I, I just think that has such a nice impact. Hope they all come back sometime, you know?
Right. It was started with the state of emergency. Since that has ended.
I think.
We are not supposed to be doing any more remote. However, in some of the emails, there are people still uncomfortable coming because we're not masked. But Brian and I were talking about starting, maybe to mention it next time, that we would not be accepting letters anymore. Trying to be respectful of everybody's position.
Maybe eight, including the letters?
Ten.
Three minutes a piece is 30 minutes.
There were eight and two letters. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I was.
And so it's 24 minutes, and we were here for over 50 minutes, public comment only. And that's, and I understand people have concerns. It's nothing to do with what, anything that was said.
Right.
But I'm, I'm thinking of our time. We're here at April 10.
I know. But I try to be respectful of everybody speaking. I know we say three minutes, but when do you cut them off without being obnoxious? And it's a very fine, very fine line. Because, you know, everybody is very passionate about this topic. And I, and we want to hear from everyone. Any topic. And, and I don't want anybody to ever feel they can't come here because they're going to be criticized or anything like that. But Brian and I have been talking about the letters that technically were out of the state of emergency. If people want to make a public comment, then they're going to have to come. So that might be something that, what does everybody feel? Does everybody agree with that?
I don't have a problem either way.
We get emails anyway. I mean, our emails.
We get emails, but they don't specifically want them read. So they have to say they want them read, and then they go into the public minutes.
I do feel like that's redundant a bit, but as long as they're in the minutes, people can find them.
Well, they won't be if they're not allowed to submit them.
Right.
Unless you have to say they're allowed.
Right. So I'm trying to give a balance of people that are still uncomfortable coming here. You know, being respectful, COVID sucks. And we're all just trying to do the best we can. But maybe we can think about it and talk about it next time, or we can make a, I can make a decision for next time. So, all right. So we're going into non-public. I need a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91-a, semicolon, 3, 2, A. The dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee, or the disciplining of such employee, or the investigation of any charges against him or her unless the employee affected, one, has a right to a meeting, and, two, requests that the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted.
So moved.
By Shane. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Ginny. I'll do roll call. Reta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle left. Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So we are in non-public, but we're going to give GTV a few minutes to disconnect.